Regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Um, I will ask Lieutenant Robbie Williams to do, to do both the invocation and the pledge of allegiance today. Okay?
Okay. Both of them.
Yes. So, um, I pledge allegiance. Oh, no, you got to stand up.
I have to stand.
There you go. I'm already standing up. And my flag is facing right out the window. Wonderful. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United States.
States of America. And to the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. invocation please? I ask for wisdom. I ask for patience. I ask for forgiveness. And I want to extend forgiveness. And I want to extend patience. For all the other human beings. That are within the sound of my voice. And that I will contact for the rest of my life. God give me strength to continue on. And supporting those people. That need our help. Amen.
Amen.
Alright. Thank you Robbie. Okay, council member Montero, we have about one, two, three, four, five presentations today. Okay. Just let's keep in mind though that we have a ten minute limit on these. Per city council ordinances. Um, but either way, we're going to appreciate every single word that's being said. Council member Montero has a presentation on the agenda, retirement of Pastor Phil Cookus, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, good evening everyone, I don't know if Pastor Phil Cookus is on the, online?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, hi. How you doing?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. Mayor and council.
Alright, so I'm glad that you were able to join us tonight. Uh, this proclamation was prepared, uh, last meeting on April thirteenth. Uh, but so I'm going to try to read a little bit of it because I think it's good to know. Uh, that, you know, you've been here in this city, uh, since nineteen fifty-two, so. People should know about your commitment to the city and all the work that you have done. Uh, in your line of ministry to the teen challenge, so I'm going to read a little bit of it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
He is known to all the same here and others who hold this present that foremost expression has been made as evident by his document. A proclamation honors of Pastor Phil Cooks. The city of Hawthorne commemorates the retirement of esteemed and much admired Pastor Phil Cookers. And Pastor Phil Cook has been a resident of the city of Hawthorne since nineteen fifty-two. Attending Manita Gardens Elementary, St. Joseph Middle School, and losing a high school. Pastor Cookus advanced his education at the California State University North Bridge. And later in his adult. Pastor Cookers entered teen challenge, an adult Christian rehabilitation center to combat. Where he be overcome several of his addiction. Phil graduated the program in nineteen eighty-five and went to attend teen challenge ministry institution. From nineteen eighty-six to nineteen eighty-seven. After feeling the call of ministry, he was there that he met his wife, Janie Cookers. Who partnered with him through many of their different ministries. Since nineteen eighty-seven, he was appointed to the director of the Los Angeles County Teen Challenge, leading the teen challenge to. Purchase nine real estate property in the Los Angeles region. In nineteen ninety-four, Pastor Cookers became lead pastor of the South Bay Celebration Assembly of God. Church with the partnership with his wife, Janie. During this time, he made the multitude of contribution to the community, include established Hawthorne. Church at the Los Angeles County Teen Challenge headquarters. And having been the lead pastor and L.A. Teen Challenge Director for over twenty-six years. Pastor Cook has seen many graduate lead productive life after turning away from substantive use and his associate problems. And as a senior pastor of the South Bay Celebration Assembly of God, he and Janie has sponsored several community events, including six years of the co-chair of the Teen Challenge car shows. We draw over more than ten thousand people. The Hawthorne City Council does formally join along with family and friends in recognizing the multitude of contribution to the community. Pastor Cook has made throughout the years and pay tribute to his service and commitment to the city of Hawthorne. This was thirteen days of April twenty-twenty-one. Congratulations Pastor Cookus.
Thank you very much, I love and appreciate the city of Hawthorne. I think it's got the best motto of anywhere I've ever been or heard of, the city of good neighbors, and I think we. Truly are the city of good neighbors. And I've always loved the city since I was a boy. And, uh, you know, I got in a lot of trouble and God, by his grace and mercy. My mama's prayers and some other people. You know, I turned my life around and gave my life to the Lord and. Did all I could, one day at a time. In honoring the Lord and honoring the great city of Hawthorne in the South Bay, which I love with all my heart. I have retired to a little town of six thousand called Holtville, the carrot capital of the world in the Imperial Valley. But I will not be a stranger to the city, my wife will be there tomorrow. Uh, we're also taking care of her mother, Gracie Ramito, ninety-three years old. But, uh, God's got a brand new adventure for me here. And, uh, I'm still cruising with Jesus and having a, a great time, and I thank the Lord for every day. And I thank the Lord for each and every one of you. You have served this city with such passion and you continue to, to take on the, the workload and. All the good, bad, and the ugly that goes with all the decisions that you have to make daily. I pray for the council and I pray for all of you that work for the city. And God bless you too Robbie, you will be missed.
And we want a party Pastor Cookus, you'll be tied up giving a goodbye party?
Well, with this COVID, it was a little hard to do anything. But still. No, I didn't have a party.
But we will, we'll schedule one when this COVID, you know, subsides.
That sounds good Alex, I, I, I'll, I'll show up.
Okay, so any of my colleagues want to say anything to the Pastor Cookus?
Yes, to the chair.
Yes.
Pastor, uh, Pastor Cooks, I just want to commend you and for all your years of service here, not just to the city, but Los Angeles. Uh, you look good, it's been a long time since I've seen you. It looks like the six thousand people is doing you well. I look forward to a city that size myself someday. But, uh, I just want to commend everything you have ever done in, uh, reaching out to the people of need. More importantly, uh, the homeless and those that are, um, you know, struggling each and every day. And, uh, can't say enough for, uh, all the service that you've provided, your wife as well, and the church. So without the church, I don't think anything, uh, would have come of, of such great service and years that you've had there. So thank you so much and a happy retirement.
Thank you for your kind words Angie, and yes, without, without my beautiful wife, Janie. Pastor Janie, I couldn't have accomplished, you know, I, I get all the accolades at a lot of banquets and things that we put on and. But it was always the, the team, the staff, the volunteers, it was always a team effort. And it was so gracious, I always appreciated that I got to know you good folks. And that you were always so attentive to any need in the city. That, that anyone calls, that they have your attention. And I think that is something to commend all of you for.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead, uh, Mayor Protemp.
Thank you so much Pastor Cookus, um, I have wonderful memories of all the things you used to do years ago when you used to. Organize those beautiful celebrations on Hawthorne Boulevard. The car shows, I think everyone just enjoyed those so much, the classic car shows. And I've heard so many people say, when are we going to have that again? And I certainly wish we could, but, um. I, I, I do remember that, uh, you and your team put those things on, put those, those shows on. And the, the entire community came out all over, all over Hawthorne, they came out to celebrate on those days, so thank you for. Thank you for caring so much about the people of Hawthorne and, and, and thank you for those wonderful celebrations you used to have. And thank you for your, your love of the, of the youth of the city. Um, we, we, we are very grateful for your, um, for your compassion and love for the youth, thank you.
Thank you Olivia, and thank you for the passion that you have held over the years and that you continue. Continue to pour out to our good city.
Good chair. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Pastor Cookus, I, I definitely want to appreciate you, uh, you've always been a friend to me, uh, anytime I've needed any kind of advice or whatever. You know, you, you're welcoming with open arms, um, you know, I definitely want to commend all the work done in the community, all the food you've given away. Uh, you know, the community members you've looked after, you know, the programs you've run at your church. Uh, I remember my first time taking a tour there, just being so impressed by, you know, how beautiful your facility is. And all the different services that you provide and provide the community and just always open to giving. And, uh, definitely wanted to just appreciate you, you know, one of the first people that I kind of met as I was getting involved in the community here in Hawthorne. And just want to thank you for, for putting your, uh, your mark on our city.
Yes, I remember the day I met you David, we were, we were doing, uh, the backpack giveaway. And, uh, school supplies and you were there and you helped. And it was a grand day and I have nothing but good thoughts about you as well. And continue to do everything that you do one day at a time for our great city.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Um, I just wanted to say a couple of words too, uh, Pastor Phil Cookus, uh, I really appreciate what you've done for our community. And most importantly, you're basically born and raised here in the city of Hawthorne, you went to the same grammar school I went to, St. Joseph. You might have left, but you came back to minister to the commu, to the community that you care about. I mean, that speaks a lot, I mean, you're a Hawthorne, uh, uh, native son as we, we call it. Uh, born and raised and giving back, so I mean, what else could we ask for? So I really appreciate all the, especially the car shows, I love the car shows. I know you, I know you like cruising, you probably got a, a low rider here and there, a few over the last few years. You got your prized car, uh, cars, automobiles that you have dressed up, so you know. Um, hopefully maybe you can help us out, uh, in, uh, establishing another car show along Hawthorne.
Anytime, you're welcome.
So, thank you so much.
I appreciate you mayor. Hey, and that church is still there and it's in good hands with Pastor Woody Robinson. And Jamal Alexander and Nick Griffey, people with the same heart. And I am encouraging them to get fully involved. But that church there on one hundred and thirtieth is still there in Manita Gardens and isn't going anywhere. It'll continue to do great things.
And another thing Pastor Cook is that, uh, we will remiss is the, uh, the, you were one of the founder of the Hawthorne Long Dell Minister Association, right? You have been a leader of that, uh, of that organization for so many, many times. Uh, that bring all the churches together at least, uh, you know, before COVID, once a month. Uh, to deal with the issues of, of, of social issues in our community, so. We really, you know, is going to miss you.
Yeah, it's a great organization, I'm still in touch with different people from the organization and. Yeah, it's, it's a good thing for the city of Hawthorne, the churches.
Yeah, alright.
Alright.
And God bless.
Thank you, God bless you all. Thanks.
Bye.
Thank you Pastor. Interim City Manager Vaughn Norris has a presentation on the agenda, go ahead.
Yes, I do, uh, good evening Mayor, Mayor Protemp. I'd like to introduce Aura Ann, uh, Deputy of Constituent Services for Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office. Uh, the floor is yours, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening Mayor Vargas and City Council, my name is Aura Ann. And I'm from L.A. County Second District Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office. I will be serving the city of Hawthorne as a field deputy. And I'm grateful that I can introduce myself at the city council meeting tonight. It was a pleasure to connect with Mayor Vargas and City of Hawthorne team at the end of March. And our office is very excited to partner with your team moving forward. And as an update from our office, we are striving to safely reopen L.A. County. Improve economic development. Create more access to COVID-nineteen vaccination. And enhance equity for all constituents in the second district. Feel free to visit our website at mitchell.lacounty.gov for news and updates. And on our website, you can also find our e-newsletter subscription link as well as our Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook accounts. I look forward to working with y'all and thank you so much for everything you do for our community. And I would like to take this time and appreciate Lieutenant Robbie Williams for twenty-five years of service at Hawthorne Police Department. On behalf of our office, I would like to extend gratitude for his dedication for our community. And through Hawthorne City Manager's office, I have learned the remarkable milestone of Lieutenant Williams. And we arranged a scroll to be sent to him from our office. So thank you so much Lieutenant Williams and best of luck to your next endeavors. And with that concludes my presentation, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Ann, I'm, um, very pleased to see you, to meet you. Um, and I want you to please extend our gratitude to Supervisor Mitchell. And to you and all, and your team for organizing the, um, the food, the Hawthorne food giveaway that we had. Um, we gave away probably almost twenty, twenty-five hundred meals to, uh, to residents and even non-residents, whoever pulled up and wanted. Whoever pulled up and, and expressed a need to have a box of food, there was one there for them, thank you for that wonderful organizing effort. And thank you to Supervisor Mitchell and your team for reaching out to Hawthorne, this is the first time we've ever had. Um, a team from the supervisor's office to reach out to Hawthorne and we are so grateful, thank you so much.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello Ms. Ann, thank you for your time and thank you for coming out this evening. Um, I didn't get a chance to, uh, introduce myself, I was, uh, I think still in the process of being sworn in when, um. When Supervisor, um. Mitchell, um, had a meeting with the city council, I, I don't believe I was, uh, in place at that time, but. Anyhow, please, uh, let her know that I look forward to meeting with her eventually and, uh. Speaking with, uh, talking with her on some other issues such as homelessness and some other concerns here, um, in the supervisory, uh, two district. But I appreciate your time and your efforts in coming out this evening.
Anybody else? Uh, thank you Ms. Ann for, uh, being our representative, uh, we really appreciate you, I think I met you briefly at the, uh. Roundtable that we had with the mayors and supervisors, so, um, it was a great opportunity to. Uh, meet, meet the supervisor once more. And to, just to see the wonderful team that she has and you're one of those members, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Council member Reyes English has a presentation on the agenda.
Thank you mayor, um, I'd like to first of all, um, acknowledge and, um, uh. Speak highly of Mr., um. Williams, our, our lieutenant of twenty-five years here in the city of Hawthorne. He served as Lieutenant Community Affairs Bureau Commander and Responding to Mental Health Crisis Instructor for the city, the city Hawthorne Police Department. Uh, for over twenty-five years and, um, focused on improving relationships between the community and officers, and let me tell you, that speaks volumes. Um, Mr. Williams, I, I hate to see you leave, um, but I'm also, uh, happy for you in what. Um, your future endeavors has for you and it's my understanding you'll be with Loyola Marymount, which is not too far away. But, um, you will be missed just, um, for the things that, not only that you've done, but have done for the city where. Relations are, are concerned and just community policing, so I want to acknowledge you and, um. We've made efforts on behalf of the city and other dignitaries to assure that you have a certificate of recognition, recognizing the years of service, dedicated service that you have. Uh, to police, uh, to the force and to the safety of the community at large. And more importantly, here in the city of Hawthorne, we're, we were very fortunate to have you for the number of years that you were here. And, and again, I can't say enough on how you will be missed and, um. I, I want to just go ahead and, and let you know that we're going to be getting those certificates of recognitions and resolutions that speaks to your life. And, uh, we will get those to you, uh, but I want to also open it up to our council members and the mayor especially to, uh, give some remarks.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
I would like to, uh, just go ahead, uh, and just, uh, and then you'll go ahead, uh, Mayor Protemp right after me. Uh, I do have a real, uh, nice, beautiful proclamation for, for you Lieutenant Robbie Williams. And of course I appreciate also everything you've done for us. Um, I totally love the, uh, police academy for the, for the residents, remember we had that? Um, you assembled that, so your expertise, uh, is not going to go unrecognized. But I have the, the proclamation signed by everybody in the city council. Uh, but I have a, a bio that I'd like to read, just so people know, you know, what you're about. Um, Lieutenant Robbie Williams has been, because you haven't left yet, has been with the Hawthorne Police Department for over twenty-five years. Robbie's past assignments and roles included, uh, detective in the Detective Bureau Commander. A patrol watch commander, a Community Affairs Bureau Commander. Um, Special Victims Investigation Supervisor. And a robbery and homicide investigator. Prior to his career in law enforcement, Robbie worked as a mental health social worker at Portos Mental Health Rehabilitation Center in Los Angeles, California. Robbie is also a veteran of the United States Marine Corps and fought in the First Persian Gulf War. Robbie is a proud member of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement, NOBLE. And is a recipient of the twenty-fifteen Homer Garrett Community Service Award. Um, there's a lot of highlights to Robbie's career, there's too many to mention here tonight, um, but these are a few highlights. In twenty-ten Robbie, in partnership with the Hawthorne Teen Center. Created the Police Teen Dialogue Program, I remember that one, over there at the teen center. The program focused on creating safe spaces for teens and police officers to foster a more trusting relationship with one another. Uh, recognizing the program's value, the Vera Institute of Justice published Robbie's article. Which detailed the program's structure in its Department of Justice Guidebook for Law Enforcement on Engaging Diverse Communities. Robbie used the same understanding between mentoring and success to form a unique eight-week program called Boys to Men. Which was held once a week at the police station. And with the help of his fellow officers and professional community members. The program provided hands-on instruction on topics such as, um, dressing for success, how to interview. Uh, writing resumes, writing in general, job interviewing, homework assistance, ethics, and community service. Um, this program was very successful and it grew beyond the walls of our, of the department. Um, it was being adopted by the, as a grassroots organization, On a Mission Incorporated. As a member of On a Mission Incorporated now for the past ten plus years. Robbie has escorted hundreds of inner-city youth on educational tours to Sacramento, Washington DC. Which included visits to the White House, the U.S. Capitol Building, the Pentagon. Historical black colleges and universities, and you even went to Beijing, China. With a passion for sharing helpful information, Robbie has hosted crime prevention and sexual assault prevention workshops. Robbie's workshop presentations provided tips, insight, and trends that parents and teachers could use to better protect their children against sexual predators. Robbie is an experienced adjunct instructor, so you teaching community colleges, in colleges, at the college level. And you've taught community-oriented, orientated policing and introduction to criminal justice. Robbie accepted his new position as the Chief of Public Safety for Loyola Marymount University. And will be retiring from the Hawthorne Police Department, I don't know, you don't look like you're old enough to retire, man, you look younger than. Me and a lot of other people. Although he will be greatly missed here at Hawthorne, at the Hawthorne Police Department and in the city of Hawthorne. We are all excited for his new chapter in life. We know he will represent the Hawthorne Police Department well. And on behalf of the city, the mayor, the city council, the residents, and the police department. We wish you the very best in your new career path, congratulations, let's give him a round of applause. And this bio was provided by your colleagues in the police department. With the chief and your colleagues, okay?
Thank you mayor.
Anybody like to ask more comments?
Yes, I would like to.
Yes.
Through the chair. Um, Robbie, I have a, a very special memory of you, we worked together on chat, do you remember chat?
Yes, I do.
The Community of Hawthorne Action Team, I still have my chat t-shirt.
I do too.
But it was just a wonderful effort, which to me is, um. Very emblematic of you in that you actually embody community policing. Before there was such a term as community policing, you were doing it. You were out there in the community, engaging the community, I remember how you worked with all of us. So closely to pull together people from all over the city to actually sit in the, um, Community Affairs. Uh, office at the, at the police department and talk about issues that were of mutual benefit to all of us. And it was so valuable because we got to meet each other. Uh, people from different communities who would never have met each other ordinarily. But um, I just remember that you, it was, it was so important to you. To be able to, to do that and to do, and, and to pull together the community like that. And when I say you embody community policing, that's what community policing is. The reason we love our police department is because of police officers like you. And they're, and we have so many of you out there in the, in the Hawthorne Police Department. I'm so proud of all of you. And I'm very proud of you. Um, you always, um, you loved Hawthorne, you engaged the Hawthorne community. And we love you right back. So, um, good luck to you. Um, I, I wish you all the best. And I know you're going to do wonderfully wherever you go, because that's who you are. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep, I got something to say.
Uh, I think, uh, councilmember, I heard councilmember Patterson.
Robbie, just let me keep it uh, brief. But I just want to appreciate you for your contribution to the community, your example. Uh, you know, I've said this many times, if uh, you, you provide a great example of what a police officer should look like, should act like, the compassion. Um. You know, just could, the, yeah, the compassion. And of course. Um. You know, hold, upholding the law, but you, you know how to do that in a way where. Uh, the community, you know, respects you and, you know, appreciates your service. And so, uh, I'm. Sure that LMU is going to, uh, you know, just love the work that you. You're, you know, the work that you're going to bring in, your commitment and your work ethic and all that stuff. We're absolutely going to miss you. Um. You know, sorry to see you go. Uh, just really am, but definitely appreciate your contribution to our city.
Thank you, David. I appreciate your support.
Uh, councilmember Montego.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. What can I say? You know, they have said everything, right Robbie? But I have to tell you that, you know, it's been almost twenty-five years that I know you, you know, and, and um. Seeing you in every community meetings that I attend, you were there, you know? I even like breakfast in the morning, early morning, you know, for those Hawthorne Land Administration Association, you would show up. And then even at nighttime, at seven PM, you know, you're there too. So, and, and you have shared your, your twenty-five years with us. Uh, you, you share your life, your, your, even your family, your, your, your love and your strategy, you know, some challenging. In your own person's life, you share that with us. Uh, so you were true gentleman. Uh, from every, every face, you know, wherever you go. And, and that's where, you know, you have been a mentor, a leader to the young people. And um, and I'm, maybe one day, you know, you will still, you know, try to teach these kids how to become a police officer. Right? Uh, because we need, we need more police officers like you. Uh, and, and I'm pretty sure that, that your level at LMU and your community college professor. Uh, you continue to do that and tell them Hawthorne is the seat of good neighbors. That we need, we need, we need the police officers over here, uh, that represent the value that you have shown for these twenty-five years. So. Uh, even when Mr. Mayor was reading your bio, it gave me goosebumps. Uh, because it's so much stuff that you have done, that it seems like you've been here for sixty years. Because you have done a lot. So, thank you and God bless and good luck on your new job.
Thank you, Alex. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Who hasn't spoken? Okay, oh, um, thank you so much, Lieutenant Robbie Williams, for your service. Um, do we? Let's, let me take a look, see who we have up here. Okay, uh, I was gonna put somebody on the spot, but I guess they're not online, so I'd rather not.
The chief is not there?
Chief Michael Ishi, are you on?
I've been listening, uh, well, I was gonna wait because I'm next on a presentation, but. Thank you, uh, you know, all the things that you were saying, it makes me miss him even more and he's still here, you know, and uh, what. Well, well, him and I, we'll, we'll chat later, but I, I do want the public to know, especially um, uh, with all the things you've said. Even within those twenty-five years, we've worked together side by side, um, but the sacrifice that, then the time away from family. Uh, it doesn't go unnoticed for, for all of us and, and uh, he is where he is because of. You know, everything he's, he, he's achieved on his own, he's earned. And um, you know. Luckily, he is a, a longtime partner. We've, we, we were friends. And uh, and a, as much as I'm going to miss him and, and all the things that he embodies here. It's been a, a inspiration for me as a chief to have him as a, as part of our team to make sure that. The values and the compassion, as Councilmember Patterson said, um, uh, is relayed to our officers, but. He's right down the street. We're going to work together. We, we go across country and teach, but um, I, I just, at the same, I, I have. There's a lot more to say, but in the interest of time, I will uh, just say congratulations and thank you for all the kind words to Lieutenant Williams. Everything you've said is absolutely true and then some, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Chief, and, and thank you so much, Lieutenant Robbie Williams. And let's give him another round of applause. Awesome. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Councilmember Reyes English has a presentation on the agenda, Hawthorne Police Department update.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if the chief is still on, I'd let, I'll pass it on to him. Um. Uh, I know that I've had some residents asking me about crime stats and I'm sure the council would like to know what our current crime stats are, so. Chief, if you'd like, take it away, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Mayor Proton and councilmembers for this opportunity. Just to give a brief update, I know we're, we're uh, compressed for time. On uh, especially the last few months on some of the crime trends that we're seeing, some of the things that we're seeing out there and uh. Uh, I'll be, you know, available for questions. I do have a quick presentation that I want to share with some stats on there. So, just a brief uh, uh, update on our crime stats. As you know, and this is a industry or the, the, this is nationwide really on a lot of these issues, but we are experiencing a, an increase in crimes. In these areas particularly, uh, that we're finding an increase in, in thefts. So, the catalytic converters. I'm sure you've read a lot. I'm sure you've heard from your constituents on, on this issue. It is a major problem, not only for Hawthorne, but across not only this region, but the country. Um, we are doing the best we can. We are putting officers out at night in undercover cars. We are. Uh, um, uh, working with our community. Um, and fortunately, we have. Uh, caught several of, of them taking it and arresting them uh, at night. So. So, great partnership with our community. We'll continue to, to address this issue as, 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 as we go on. Uh, package thefts continue to be an, an issue with everybody at home. Um, the, the amount of thefts that are going on, a lot of it is unreported. We are going out to our, our uh, uh, community via Zoom at this point. Um, to talk about different ways that um, our community can help prevent package thefts. Um, especially from uh, the delivery trucks. So, we are continuing, uh, continuing to. Uh, track these and, and do the best we can to uh, work on prevention, because there are so many packages out there. Um, stolen cars, this again is a nationwide or a, a county-wide issue. Um, we're up about forty percent compared to last year this time. So, there are, uh, this is a, a growing trend. We are working with partnerships with other police departments in the area, but. Uh, this is a trend again that we are seeing. Uh, another trend and increase we are seeing is aggravated assaults. Um, this is um, something, again, as we. Uh, move forward, it's a county-wide issue, but we are seeing a, a significant increase in aggravated assaults. So, these are the main areas that we are seeing an increase in crime. Uh, they, we have seen decreases in crime as far as residential burglaries, petty theft, um, robberies. Um, so we are seeing areas that um, in different parts that we're seeing decrease, but these are the areas that we are focusing a lot on. Uh, crime trends from nineteen, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we had an approximate increase of about seven percent in crimes against persons. This was. After about three or four years of decrease every year up until then. Uh, and about a twelve percent increase in property crimes. And this is a general from the, from the previous years. In the last six months, we have unfortunately had five homicides. Um, and out of those, we have three that uh, the suspects were arrested. We have them in custody and they're awaiting trial. And as I mentioned before, aggravated assaults are of, up approximately seventy-five percent compared to this time last year. Um, some of these are gang-related. We are seeing an uptick in gang-related crimes and we are strategizing and working with our gang unit. And our patrol officers to address these issues. Uh, just as a reference for calls for service, nine-one-one and non-emergency calls, last year we had around seven, approximately seventy-three thousand calls. Uh, which is quite a bit compared to our neighboring agencies. And so far this year, from January to April, we have. Received about twenty-two thousand calls, so we continue to be active and busy in responding to calls for service from our community. Uh, we continue to operate under the Hawthorne Safe Initiative and this is a specific. Plan and agenda that we have on how to um, deploy our resources in the areas that we are concentrating on, our parks. Our streets, in other words, our um, uh, increase in traffic, our schools, our businesses and neighborhoods. Uh, last year, we did over forty-six hundred community patrol checks. This is our officers getting out of our patrol, of the patrol cars. Uh, and, and visiting the businesses, schools, residents. And this is part of our community policing strategy. If there's one of the biggest barriers in communication, it's the police car. So, our officers are getting out of their cars and, and talking to homeowners, residents. Uh, and just people in general to, to build that relationship. We always believe that our parks are a huge part of um, the safety of our community and we believe that if our parks go. Then the whole community starts to deteriorate quickly. So, we have spent a lot of time and efforts in our parks. Uh, we work closely with um, uh, who is now the interim. Uh, uh, city manager, but with, with Vaughn to make sure that our parks are clean and safe for our kids and, and families to play at. Or to use. And then the last one here is our security business checks. We've doubled compared to a year before and this was during the pandemic. We've. Uh, s- uh, spent a lot of our resources and times making sure our business owners and our businesses throughout the community were. They had a voice and we had presence there. Um, as this time last year, I recall. At Costco, maybe there was two thousand people lined up, um, and there was a, there was a lot of anxiety and uncertainty. We wanted to make sure that our business owners, um, small and big, uh, across our community had our officers there. And so, we started these and we've. Uh, made sure that our officers were out there talking to the business owners and managers. Quick update on the hiring, uh, within the department. In the last two and a half years, especially uh, in my tenure as chief, uh, we hired sixteen officers. Um, and we are currently staffed at eighty-nine of ninety-five officers. Um, and we are continuously testing. We had a testing, uh, uh, written test today. And we had about seventy people show up, which is encouraging. And this is an area that we continue to work on and, and have challenges, because all the police departments in the area are hiring. And so, uh, finding the best candidates, finding the best fit uh, for our, our community and our culture. Is what uh, we continue to do and, and make a, make a priority for. And that's a quick update and I'm available for questions for you, from you, from the council.
How about questions?
Uh, councilmember Patterson, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Uh, chief. Uh, the police department has a program where there's officers on, on bikes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um. Can you tell me a little, little bit about how that's going? Is it, how people receiving it, how successful that is, like?
Yeah, so thank you, uh, councilmember Patterson for mentioning that. That is a huge success. Uh, we have deployed our bike team and not just on an hour or two basis. They are going out on a, uh, for the whole day and not just in certain areas and all parts of our community. Uh, it has received a great positive reaction from our community through social media and also phone calls. I hope you are getting some. Good feedback from them and uh, as we are able to hire more officers, we are intending to make that a full-time. Uh, um, uh, part of our organization. Um, so it is a big part of it and it's one of the biggest barrier removers that we have in community policing. Uh, which is getting our officers on bicycles up close and meeting our communities.
Just visually, I really like it. I've seen officers around and it's just, I don't know why, just visually, I enjoy seeing that.
Absolutely. And that's the reaction we're getting and uh, you know, not only is it part of crime prevention, but also it's building our relationships. And it's much more approachable. It's much easier to approach an officer on a bicycle than it is in a car driving by if the window's upright. So, it is very deliberate and our officers love it. Fortunately, the bicycles now, the technology allows us to do it. They're electric. So, they're not pedaling twenty-six miles a day. But uh, um, uh, we are intending to, to hit all parts of our town. Thank you.
And just one last thing, um. Does, do you guys have a strategy for recruitment? Like, as far as I can remember, we've always had less. Officers than we were staffed for. And I've been around for a little, little while. Does, the, is there a strategy for addressing that? Although there is a challenge, I understand a lot of other agencies are recruiting as well. Not, and not just being fully staffed, but also making sure we have a great diversity in our police department.
Those are very, those we talk about all the time, uh, and Lieutenant Williams, who we just saw, we, we talk about that all the time and. Uh, yes, it is, it is a, a challenge, but certainly something that we have to address, which is diversity. But also gender, you know, out of the sixteen officers, uh, three are, are female officers. And um, so that's a, that's a huge part of, of us moving forward. So, continuous testing, but also. Hopefully, you know, you've, you've mentioned some great programs with college, you know, we need to go out and be proactive in trying to find. Uh, young men and women that are willing to serve. And as Lieutenant Williams said earlier, he's spot on. Um, we have to make sure that people feel like this profession is something that you can. Uh, um, do and make a difference for the positive in the community and not just the negatives that we always see. And truly, that's what our officers are doing out there. And getting that message out is going to be something we focus on. But it is an ongoing thing. Uh, we, we talk about it all the time and I hope that. Uh, as we move forward, that uh, we do better in that.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, uh, good evening, um, um, chief. Good to see you this evening. Um, I'm concerned about a possible lowering of morale in the police department because of all of the negative publicity. That's going on around the country about the police. How are, how are our police. Uh, officers handling all of this? How are they doing?
There, it's a challenge. Uh, and our, what we're doing is communicating a lot and. Uh, believe it or not, they are, they are going out every day, uh, just like in, you know, in the past and, and doing the best they can to serve the community. Um, and that comes from hopefully a, a good, positive working culture that uh, um, you know, I've. Worked hard and, and trying with our team to, to build and establish, um, and a culture of service. Having our officers meet and make positive contacts. Really is reaffirming for, for them, for our officers to feel like they're making a difference on our community. So, again, I wish Lieutenant Williams was still on here, uh, but when it comes to compassion, respect. Um, and serving our community, that's our, that's part of our core value here. So. Um, uh. It's, it's a challenge, but you know, when you get out there and talk to the, to members of the community who truly are, are looking for. The, our officers for um, uh, safety and, you know, uh, mentoring as far as our schools and different places. Um, that's what keeps them driving. So, um, having those positive interactions is a big part of it.
And I, and I think it's very important too that, uh, that the police, uh, the, the, the men and women in the police department know. That the council is behind them, because I think part of the problem in um, different parts of the country is. That the police feel as though their communities are not backing them. And I think that's tremendously important. Um. It's as, it's as important that the council support you as you support the council and the city. So, I just want to reinforce the fact that. Um, we do support you and, and, and we um, we're, we're behind you and we want to uh. We want to encourage you and we thank you for, um, for your, your effort to always engage the community.
Anyone else?
All right, through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Chief Ishi, for giving us the update. Um, yes, I have to say that, you know, our police department, you know, that is where. Uh, last year, during the older turmoil about the uh, uh, Black Lives Matters and, and the defund the police. Our city, you know, was, was spared, right? Because of the relationship that uh, you and your department built. In the community, because when we're talking about those bicycle, uh, police officers on the bikes, you know, you see them, you know, Holly Park and Monita Gardens. Um, and it, it was fantastic, you know, because, you know, when they stopped by. When they stop by on the stop sign, you know, you're just right there. You could say hi or even, you know, shake their hands and everything like that. And even, you know, to see, I know the police officer giving toys away during Christmas time, you know, giving food away during the pandemic. So all these building relationship and then when you guys went up to protect the business, you know, during during the riots and and even during COVID. So that that's the relationship is fundamental for our city and 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 like Ms. Valentine said, you know, we support our police department. Because we know you don't have. The numbers of office that you need and you make it happen for the for the last office that you have. So so that is what is important to us and not like we have to understand, police office is there to protect us, to save. You guys have the hardest hardest job in 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 this universe. And 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 it's unfortunately that, you know, in some cities, we know some bad apples happens to make the police in this spotlight. But thanks God that we we have a police department that understand our community because some of them's been here for a long time. You know, like yourself, been here almost thirty five years, ten and will even twenty five years. So they dedicate their time, like you said, you know, away from their families. And that is where we need to make sure that our office are treated well, that compensation is competitive. And maybe, you know, later on, like we talked in the past, you know, maybe to come up with some incentive program. For them to stay in Hawthorne, not to go after training or after they, after they. Their academy, stay here for two years and go somewhere else. So we want them to stay. We want to show them that Hawthorne is warm, is a seat of good neighbor. That we care about them. So we want them to stay here. So so definitely outstanding work and continue to. Go on with that department because we love the HPD.
Thank you very much. I'll make sure our officers hear those words.
Yes.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Chief, I know you mentioned that you had sixteen officers that were recruited. Was it sixteen?
Yes.
Sixteen, you said three were women?
Yes.
Is it a diverse sixteen?
As far as gender, it's three. I. Broke it down. So out of the sixteen. Six were white. Seven Latino, two Asian and one black officer.
Okay, great. I appreciate the time that you're taking to give us the stats. I know the community. I'm in contact with and frequently call me with regards to policing matters. Always want to assure that the police has their. Their concerns, right? And we have their ears as far as what we're hearing and then passing that along. I think communication is important. I think things that have taken place in the past and continue to take place in our nation with regards to. Policing issues and the community policing, still, we have a long ways to go. I like the fact that you have the bicycle patrol. I hope to see that grow. As well, a a more diverse and and maintain diverse police force that is reflected of what the community. You and I look like and those others out there that say we don't have enough. So recruitment is very important. I'd like to also see. Some community programs coming back open as, you know, we get past COVID and we open up City Hall and continue to do these. Functions, events in the community. I'd like to see how we could coordinate a sketching event. For the capital, what is it? The cattle converters? Where you sketch the VIN numbers on them, should anyone find them, you know, they match the VIN number with the vehicle, make it easier, easier for them to return. And also a gun destruction program where where all the guns that have been collected through crimes and other. Stops and things here in our city could ultimately have those destructed and. Look forward to doing something like that in the future. But again, thank you for your time and thank you for giving us. An update on what our city looks like currently, where where crime is concerned. But I think more importantly, the community appreciates the fact that. The community appreciates the fact that safety is first for all of us here at the city, especially the council members. And anything, anything less than that is something that we don't support. But look forward to working along police and just assuring that a safe community is something that we always. Have first. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Through the chair, I guess a quick mention about the social media because you guys have been very active and I love, you know, the next door and Instagram. Telling us what's going on on, for example, in some street. So so that's fantastic. I love, I love to see that. So. Good job on that.
Go ahead. Was that it?
Thank you, and I appreciate all the things you mentioned, you know, when Councilmember. English mentioned his crime stats, you know, I was focused on that, but all the things you brought up, I I'm glad you brought it up and we talked. In the situation and we have, as she mentioned, I mean, there's a lot, we have to work at this. This is an ongoing issue. So appreciate the the continuous. Communication and and support and we'll we'll make sure we work together and make things better.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Okay. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good job. And please say hello to all the men and women of our police department, the staff and the. Patrol officers and management. Say hi to them for us if you could, please.
I will. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Councilmember Reyes English has a presentation on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
Update on illegal dumping pilot program. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For for, you know, residents, constituents that have been calling and asking about, you know, the dumping. That is happening, it seems to be a lot more of. I asked for public services to provide a presentation that would address those concerns. More importantly, they've. Made efforts to work with the city to provide more workforce, to address the issue of bulky items and pickup. And so I want to have the opportunity to bring Carlos and Dawn from. Operations manager Carlos and Dawn are representative here in the city to speak on. The dumping pilot program and how important it is for the constituents to call and let us know when they have an item that needs to be picked up. Go ahead, Dawn and Carlos, please.
Thank you, Councilmember. We've got our team available for the presentation. Let's see. Like to show them off. But we've got onboard with us, we've got our general manager, Tanya Griffin. We've got our operations manager Carlos Guzman. Our operations supervisor, who is in the field monitoring the drivers every day, Jesus Sanchez. And then we also have our finance manager, David Yen. And so our team is is available tonight to present for you. If we could have the slides. Thank you very much. Tanya, are you there?
I am, I am. You're doing such a great job. I just thought, well, okay, she's already taken my part. But Mr. Mayor and the city council members, first of all, thank you for the invite. Our partnership is truly important to us. I was actually going to introduce the team. Don did that for us. She did leave out Carlos Guz, I mean, Eric Organista. He is another operations manager that we have. So that's why I said it's that important to us that we actually have the full staff here. Tonight to go through the bulky collection process. And Don, you want to go through the next slide?
Sure. Okay, so just wanted to give you just a really quick overview of the. The scope of service that you have exist in the existing agreement. And that is that we do collect bulky items. And want to make sure that you know what bulky items actually are. And that includes furniture. Appliances, e-waste, bundled landscaping debris. Things like that, some car tires. All of those kinds of things that typically do not fit inside of the regular curbside trash container. We collect those things. Hopefully, they are not bigger than two men can lift. So that, I don't know, if somebody has a baby grand piano, we might have a challenge with that, but otherwise, we do pick up. Just about anything else. Next. And the way we pick this up for the single family residents. They are allowed twenty items per year you can get. So we break that into four bulk pickups and five bulk items at each pickup. So that's a really generous program compared with other cities in your area. But a regular residential location would be able to get twenty items picked up from their house every year. All we ask is that they call and quite frankly, the single family residential homes. They call, we schedule, not too much of an issue with those. For the multifamily and commercial, and we mean. Multifamily locations that are apartment complex, maybe triplex with a dumpster. Those are also entitled to twenty items per calendar year. We just ask the same thing, that those locations contact us so that we can schedule. And then the other part that we. That is included in the agreement are that we pick up abandoned items or illegally dumped items. And there is a map that we follow that is part of the agreement and then we follow that. I believe four days a week and we pick up at some hotspots. And so to talk a little bit more about that, then we will go to Carlos and Jesus.
Thank you, Don. If you can go to the next slide, please. Good evening, everyone. So as Don mentioned, we do provide residential and multifamily services as well as the abandonment services. We do follow this map that you see in the presentation. These are the service dates, the red areas, we focus on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. And the green areas, we focus on Thursdays. So not only do we service our scheduled bulky item pickups. But we do do a sweep around these areas and our main focus are throughout these scheduled dates. Next slide, please. So in the event a resident or multifamily home has any excess service or they were too surpassing the. Items in the in the event of a resident going over five items, we would follow this process, which is the red tagging process and the green tagging process. The red tagging would be for just a fair one that they could see if they're allotted amount for five items. And the green tag would then replace after the. After that second notice in regards to an extra charge. And asking us to please call us in order in efforts to schedule future services. Next slide, please. So these are the, similar to the map I just showed previously, these are the kind of examples that we do run into while servicing the abandoned base hotspots. Or abandoned items that we do see in the streets. It is a similar map that you see to the left. The yellow is more focused on the prime areas. In which we. Our driver or supervisor is noticing most of these. Items in which we tend to focus more on. So these are little examples of what we do see. Not sure if you have anything to add, Jesus.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. So that that yellow section there, I I depicted as one of our highest. Coverage areas of bulky items. I mean, as fast as we pick up and they see us leave, we we see it there the next day, right? So it's kind of, it's from, it starts pretty much Crenshaw West to Prairie. So the the streets are Charisse. Yukon, Hornblum, Doty. And Cordery. All the way to Prairie, as I stated, from El Segundo, pretty much to Imperial Highway, right? And I got to tell you, it's. It's interesting to see how much furniture comes out from these places, right? And it always seems to be kind of either at the end of the week. Or at the end of the month. And it just keeps us. We're working, right? Keeps the job coming in and and keeps the guys busy. Many times he needs help. If you look at the pitcher center there, it's it's a. Recliner lounger. So all that fabrication underneath the leather and material and cushion is heavy metal. Right? I think Don mentioned in the opening here was. The drivers aren't allowed to pick anything over, you know, sixty pounds. More than six feet tall. It's got to fit in our truck. So that when they dump it, it doesn't fall out of the truck and damage any property. So we, we also have challenges out there to try to ensure that we're. One, picking the stuff up safely so there's no injuries and two, no property damage to any, anyone or anything. I think we're, we're doing a really good job of trying to play catch up or keep up. But that's, I think, and I'm hearing that in many cities, right? I worked very close with Public Works with Ray. And they're tremendous as well. Those guys are out there just as much as we are trying to pick up. That's how much is out there.
Thank you, Jesus. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick overview on from twenty nineteen for COVID to twenty twenty and and now this recent past quarter. And in the slide, you can see the the peak during the COVID season of twenty twenty. We did experience an extra and heavier bulky item amount of times coming through having service. I do have to say, and and the graph does speak for itself, it is, we have seen it lighten up on our end. And residents, we know a lot better as far as putting items out. Where they don't belong, but we're still definitely making our. Our efforts out there on making sure our streets are clean and healthy.
And Carlos, if I can interject really quickly, one of the things when we saw this is we realized it was during COVID. So we got a little lax on on tagging. Our customers because we knew what was going on with the city. Everyone was kind of suffering. So during the peak, we did not tag or charge any extra for multiple items. We just picked it up. Because of our relationship with the city, we thought that would be best. We do want to get back into. The cadence of doing the process according to the contract. As you see, the numbers are going down. We think it's more, it's more time now that we can educate the customers or re-educate the customers and start the actual process up again.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Ms. Griffin. I just want to make mention. We all know that COVID has had an effect on all of us and especially on our households. We also know that there's been a lot of job loss. There's been a lot of job loss. There's been a lot of folks that have been. Evicted from their homes due to non, non paying of rent. We have residents that are long serving residents. And so there's a lot of issues that the city is addressing, not to mention. Assisting with rental rental assistance to help them pay their rent. There's, there's various, various reasons and concerns, but yes, you're absolutely. Right when you had an uptick on additional dumping in the streets, but. We want to, we want to be able to do a campaign. On educating the community on the numbers to call, the phone numbers to call. And how to schedule a pickup to make it more streamlined. We also want to be able to. Put something out there in writing to residents' mailboxes to assure that they have maybe a magnet or something that they could put on the refrigerator or. Something like this. I I hope that we could. Work something collectively so that we could do that, so that everyone understands. Everyone's role and how we're, we're trying together to make Hawthorne a better Hawthorne, but more importantly, clean it up. I know there's some folks that have also told me that they feel that there isn't anything wrong with Hawthorne, that the city's on top shape. Well, it depends on where you live, right? And I'm not fortunate to live in the areas that they say that. There's nothing wrong and it's just, you know, beautiful and clean. So I live in the heart of it and I understand. One of your managers speaking to. How high dumping is in the areas of, you know, Roche Crans, La Mole, you know, Cordery, et cetera, et cetera. And that's, you know, mainly in the Monita Gardens area. But I think it's everywhere and I think working together and your office willingness is, says a lot. And I appreciate that from Suzanne to you, to Jesus, to Carlos, to all of you, just making efforts. To address the concerns of the community.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And that's what we're here for. It's a partnership.
Yes, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you guys are done with the with the PowerPoint presentation. Are you finished?
Can we take it down?
Okay, all right. Thank you, Republican, Don and Tanya and Carlos and Jesus. Yeah, because you know how we've been struggling with this bulk items for a long time and that's one of the things that when I got elected. In twenty eighteen, I tried to ask the, the former city manager to. To negotiate a new contract and a new bulk items, right? And then we starting. July first, twenty nineteen, we went from twice a year to to give people twenty free item pickups. What I want you guys to explain to me, because when you mentioned something about five, five items versus twenty items, can you explain that to me, please?
Well, it's still twenty items, but the items are broken down by quarters. So you'll get five items per each for four pickups. So it's still twenty items, but it's just broken up.
Okay. All right. So yeah, so the other thing that Ms. English was mentioned because, yeah, because we, we continue to see a lot of bulk items on the street, special in the Monita Gardens area that Carlos and Jesus described, you know, right? Because right there, we have a lot of apartment complexes. Basically, that Monita Garden area, one square mile, that is where seventy percent of the population of Hawthorne lives. Because all of those apartments, because some of them have two hundred units, right?
Yes.
And that is the hardest place because Don would remember that in twenty nineteen, we tried to do a town hall meetings with the apartment owners and, and, and the homeowners to tell them about the program, you know? So they don't need to put those bulk items on the street for them to call. So I think that what Ms. English talked about education, I think you guys have to help us out because we put out, you know, press releases, we put on our cable, we put it everywhere. But I think because since you send the bill every month to the, to the, to the apartment owners and to the property managers, maybe you can, you know, hit them every month, remind them about the bulk item pickups. They don't need, they need to talk to the tenants because, you know, if somebody's going to move out and go somewhere else, they just pick up and put everything on the sidewalk, right? And, and that is where maybe we need to educate the apartment owners and the property managers. And then I think through your billing system, maybe, you know, put something there constantly to remind them, you know, they have this twenty bulk item pickup and then they don't need to put them on the street. They can call and arrange a pickup. That is, I think, is, is, is the key thing that is missing is because of those apartment complexes. Because when you move west of Hawthorne, you don't see too many bulk items, right? Because people understood the, the, the process, like the Holly Park. You know, they've been calling you guys to go pick up those bulk items. So that is where I, I think is that we need to focus on that one square mile of the city that constantly you can see trash over and over and over again. And like Ms. English said, we want to see a beautiful city, not just some section, but all the five nine, five point nine square miles. And I know, you know, you guys are doing your best. And even, you know, through the public works, you know, we came up with a pilot program that, you know, some of our own, you know, employees go pick up some of the bulk items that they left on alleys and, and some other places. So we would love, you know, for the, for us to continue this tremendous partnership with Republic and to make sure that our city looks, you know, beautiful. And you guys is the one who have to help us out clearing up and help us send the message out there. Tell the people they don't need to put those bulk items on the street for five days, but put them the night before the truck is coming. So that's, I think, you guys have the power because you send the bills every month to them, okay? Because we try. Even I did a PSA and put it over there. But, and, and you know, and my heart sometimes aches because I said, oh my God, why do these people put this trash out? Sometime I have to take picture on my phone and send it to the public works and then for them to go pick it up because it's a shame, it's a shame. But thank you for, for your service.
Thank you.
Is that it? All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. And personally, for me, let me see. For me, this is even more of a reason for the city council to refrain from building high-density housing in these areas.
Amen.
Okay, so I hope there, I mean, I really hope that in the near future, that like the residents pay very close attention to how this council votes. You know, and, and it should be protecting and relief, trying to find some relief to this whole, the parking situation and this trash situation, not by exacerbating the problem. Okay, thank you. But, um, as of, right? But as of now, let's try the best communicating, like you said, Councilman Montero, I agree, trying to working with the apartment owners and trying to make sure with what we have that we try to have something that's efficient between them and their tenants, okay? Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, during oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body should have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member.
What's your report?
We have eight individuals who would like to speak tonight.
Eight? Go ahead. Line them up, I guess.
All right. So first we have Jerry. Hello, Jerry?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, sir. You have three minutes. You may want to turn off your computer or turn it down.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jerry Jemgochin, a longtime business owner in the city of Hawthorne. A couple of issues I wanted to talk about tonight. First off, I wanted to echo the support for the Hawthorne Police Department. They're a total jewel to this city. The respect and positive image they portray throughout the community of professionalism and, and caring in their, in their community policing is something that we as business people greatly appreciate. So I echo everything that was said today and Chief issues just doing a, a great job. And we support and are proud to have a police force like the Hawthorne Police Department. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate this council on having a working attitude. And I think the, the statements that they made at the last council meeting to terminate the city attorney and the city manager were things that are significant, significant improvements for this city. And I think that that decision that was made last week will pay dividends to everyone, business, residents alike. I also, you know, on April twenty first, sent a letter to Mr. Norris, the acting city manager, with regards to the planning director Greg Taguchi and asked if his requirements as planning director were achieved. I noticed that in reviewing his Human Resources Department application, that he was required to have ten years of responsible professional experience in planning, five years of which as a supervisor. And that he has an AICP certification as a certified planner. And that was to be done within six months of his employment. I don't believe that, that any of that, that he qualifies under any of those things. And I requested Mr. Norris to provide that because there's no reason that we should have an uncertified planner in the planning department. Plus, I'm sure that you read my email dated April twenty third, where Mr. Taguchi had some interesting activities in the city of Vernon, where he actually burned magnetic tapes from the accounting department that contain sensitive financial data from the city of Vernon. So I think it's time to take a look at Mr. Taguchi and see if he's really capable of leading the city in the planning department. Because as a business leader and a developer, I'm greatly concerned with his abilities. Which leads me to the next thing having to do with Christopher Beck. Mr. Beck entered a contract, entered a contract between the city and Newmark Knight Frank Real Estate through Mr.
Sir, you have ten minutes, or ten seconds, sir, ten seconds.
Ten seconds? Okay. Through Mr. Lee and Mr. Miyahara, it's costing the city twenty-five thousand dollars, a maximum of twenty-five thousand. There's no reason to have a broker acting as a consultant for the city. The best thing to do is let the developer work it out, make his deal and then address things with the city.
Thank you, sir.
Finally, just one last thing, just one last thing. On April twenty-sixth, I provided a letter requesting investigation with regards to planned and biggest deal, which I'm sure you guys have copy of, a copy of. I'd like you to ask yourself how a twenty-three thousand square foot building that requires ninety-five apartment spaces only has seventy-nine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I get it.
Goodbye.
Okay. Well, Mr. City Clerk, let's, let's make sure that they try to wind it down or give them an earlier, give them an earlier warning.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Raymond Vargada. Raymond, you have three minutes.
My name is Raymond Vargada. I'm a homeowner, proprietor and long-term resident of Hawthorne. I'm extremely disappointed in our city leaders, specifically Alex Montero, Angela English and David Patterson. They recently voted and fired our city manager and attorney of thirty-five years.
Direct the council as a whole.
Thirty-five years. As if that never mattered. Why? And then they bring in a law firm without putting this through a well-pought-out decision. Where is the transparency? Did our city manager or attorney solve the worst in them and did not want to play along? What is Alex Montero, Angela English and David Patterson planning next? Marijuana dispensaries for our children? High-density housing at the Hawthorne Mall and Robert Kennedy Hospital? Are these people in bed with these pocket, are they in bed with these deep-pocket developers? Demanding money for work? Something rotten in city hall is happening. And Alex Montero, Angela English and David Patterson, I hope you do not do a
Please address the council as a whole.
To our beloved city. Remember why we voted for you. Take a lesson for our city attorney and manager. They showed honesty, integrity and ethical values to Hawthorne. Shame on you. You have lowered our stock. Shame on you. Shame on you. Good night, Mayor Vargas and Olivia Valentine. Good night.
Next we have Ruben Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, hi, this is Ruben Sanchez. I'm with the North Hawthorne Community Association. You know, I know leading and being a leader, sometimes you have to make some hard choices. But right now, Mr. David Patterson, Angie English and Alex Montero, you made a choice that is unacceptable.
Can you please address the council as a whole?
You made a choice that is unacceptable by hiring this law firm. Not only does law firm that you have right now in place help fire Mr. Russell Miyahara, but you replaced him with it. That's conflict of interest. You know, you have tarnished our legal department. We have competent attorneys inside our city hall that can replace Mr. Russell. Why didn't you? You know, right now that law firm should not be involved in any choices, any decisions of anything because of just the background that they have right now, starting from Chico, California, all the way to Long Beach, California. As you all know right now, ex-mayor Chris Brown, yes, Mr. Marijuana Dispenser guy, he's a very, he's what, BFF with David Patterson, everyone knows that. You know, you know that the developers right now supported Angie English when she ran. Yeah, everyone knows that. And right now, you know, the question is that why is it that Mr. Montero became a foot soldier coming to our communities, asking questions, then going back, going back into the council and using that against us? It is ridiculous what had, what is going on. Because right now, what, surprise, surprise, what's next? Marijuana dispensary that's down the pipeline and, and a lot of development. Connect the dots, you know, what's going on right now in our city. You know, you have somebody who's already affiliated with ex-mayor Chris Brown and you have, you have another councilwoman who's affiliated with the developers. But Mr. Montero, you're disappointing everyone. The only good thing about this is that everyone from the homeowners association, from Holly Glen, Holly Park and North Hawthorne, we all are going to hold you accountable. All three of you are going to be held to account. You know, there's no, that law firm should not make any, any crucial choices, especially when it comes to the marijuana dispensary and to development for the future. And you know that's down the pipeline. Also wanted to address this before this finishes off. In the last meeting, Mrs. Angie English owes Mr.
Oh my God, really?
You owe him an apology.
Yeah, twenty seconds, sir.
Because, because his family watches this and, and you think how embarrassing that can be? You know, being screamed at by a mini tyrant? You know, you owe him an apology. If you have an issue with anybody there, you should talk to them after the meeting. Don't be disrespectful.
Sir, you're out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Lethell Williams. The community had a sigh of relief to listen to the planning director, Mr. Greg, to let them know that tax amendment could be applied to our zone code to welcome in our incoming developers. However, Imperial and Inglewood, a state-of-the-art car wash is there. Now, that's the thing to say that you got to be careful what you wish for because have been wishing that business would come to our community and open up a business that people from all over different neighborhoods would come and patronize that business. So that's the line that we see, which is a good thing. However, if you travel down with me a little bit further east to Imperial and Hawthorne Boulevard, which we have a wonderful drive-through Starbucks. Now, as cars enter in off of the Hawthorne side, there, there is a long line and that line is interfering with the forty bus line, which is a big, serious bus line going through our commu- community. And you have standing business that's been there next door to it for over twenty years, which is me, Casenta. And it, it, the community was wondering if there's still anything that the city could do in obtaining and partner with that Starbucks owner to expand the parking lot. Because me, Casenta have been there a very long time and just turned it into Sue Casenta. And at Hawthorne Boulevard in El Segundo, there, there is a skeleton pole that's begging for it to become the City of Hawthorne Good Neighbor sign with some lights and, and, and advertisement that's going on in the city. And it's been taught and another sign of relief that flyers that have been going around from the housing department, people are able to apply for those emergency benefits from their cell phone lady right there in the twenty-four hour, in the twenty-four hour laundromat. Went on her phone and she was so elated that the, it was a two-side flyer with Spanish on one side and English on the other side. And she was really, really, she didn't have a laptop or a computer, but she had her cell phone and she, she applied in the evening time for those emergency benefits. And I would just like to shout out the new businesses on the Boulevard, Planet Fitness, and there is a chicken eatery and there is a Cajun eatery. Our
Ms. Williams, you have twenty seconds.
Our community is definitely coming along, so kudos to those new businesses. And thank you for my time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. See you. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, next we have Ms. Megan Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell? Ms. Mitchell? Yes, you may want to turn down your computer. You have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers, pro-am and mayor. I'm Megan Mitchell and I'm coming to you out of great concern this evening. Some of the councilmembers' decisions to properly remove our city attorney, that's why I'm talking to you. I'm a new resident. I don't know all the ins and outs behind the scene information or what prompted this, but it was not done in a respectful or a professional manner. I'm appalled that the new interim city manager was brought in to consult on the firing of the former and he was then hired to replace him in this interim situation. In an interview with the Daily Breeze, he said he's been soliciting the city for work for years and this seems like a move on his part to create an opening for himself and a direct conflict of interest facilitated by none other than three of our own city council members. According to that same article, he potentially did something similar in Chico, where he's also their city attorney. There's general counsel to several agencies in Long Beach, the county of San Bernardino, and his firm has a new client in a school district. And I don't think it's in the best interest of Hawthorne to have an intern for the attorney representing so many groups who obtain this position in an unethical way. I'm addressing the council as a whole and discussing the voting of specific members. I do not have faith in the judgment of councilmember English, Patterson and Montero, especially because their logic and forethought of this hasty Especially because their logic and forethought of this hasty decision. It makes me question my support of them and it makes me not trust what they will do in the future. I expect my city, after its heavy history of corruption, to hold itself to a higher standard. I fully suspect there was some weird backdoor things going on and this does not feel okay. I can speculate that it's to help bring cannabis to Hawthorne, it's what the rumors are. I know there's a special city council meeting tomorrow regarding this very issue. Lastly, I would like to encourage the council to allow our interim city manager time to get acclimated to this position. And provide some stability as well. It seems that City Hall might be a difficult place for newcomers and I hate to lose a candidate who has such a positive history in Hawthorne. And obvious love for the city get pushed out because of politics. As a resident, I firmly believe we deserve better decision-making from our elected officials. My statements today feel important to ensure that the residents and the future of our city are being considered. Over the special interest of niche businesses and friends. The residents are watching, we're concerned with what we're witnessing.
Thank you. Next we have, uh, Ms. Santana. Ms. Santana? Okay, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Thank you, my comment today was about your recent hire, the interim attorney, um. Wanted to know how long, uh, the idea of interim is, is it a couple months, is it one, two, three, four months? Um, and second, I wanted to know if it was appropriate to hire a law firm that fired our city attorney. And then conveniently hired themselves to be the attorney. Um, I was wondering if we had Mister Von Tret Norris on standby to be interim city manager. Why not have one of our city attorneys, um, currently, uh, that are working for the city step into that position? Since it would only be an interim position, um. And then after doing some due diligence on, and reading up on some of these articles, especially in light of what the Daily Breeze, um, posted. It seems like this law firm has multiple, um, accusations of conflict of interest. Uh, with cities like Pomona, Long Beach, Chico, Montebello and West Covina. Um, my thing is I'm tired of seeing Hawthorne being in the news. Uh, from the mayors, you know, from previous situ- you know, situations, from stealing money from charities, getting evicted. Um, you know, bankrupt, bankrupting our reserves. Um, can we just get it together, can we just hire somebody appropriately that's going to be for the city a hundred percent? Um, a hundred percent of the time and who's gonna have the city's interest as their number one thing? Um, that was my only comment, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Santana, have a good night. Alright, and last we have Mister Steven Snorland. I can't hear anything?
Yeah, Miss, uh, Diana's trying to get a hold of him. She's gonna try one more time. We tried Mister Snor- Snorland three times, but he hasn't picked up.
Is there, was there a letter that was distributed through oral communication, was just, was that just a letter for, for viewing?
No, that was for-
Is that something that's entered into the record verbally?
Yeah, it was, he wanted that entered into the record.
So, go, go ahead and read it.
No, it wasn't verbally, he was gonna call in. And then he just wanted to email that to everybody, yeah. Alright, so we can move forward.
Okay. Alright, um, anybody else, if not?
Yes, to the chair.
Oh, go ahead.
And this is directed to the city clerk, I want to hold him accountable. The rules are to, to direct the council as a whole, not individually, you have plenty of opportunities to call on each of those individuals to remind them. That it's by full council, not by, by any individuals. The attacks that we're having is because you're allowing it and orchestrated along with the mayor, so it needs to stop. You want to address the council, address it as a whole. So I'm holding you accountable, city clerk.
Ms. English, we did tell the individual, individuals to address the council as a body. And then I repeatedly told individuals to do-
You're not stopping it, you're not stopping it, everybody's witnessing it.
I can't physically stop anyone.
Yes, you can, you could interrupt and tell them.
Uh, council member English, alright, first of all, you know, there's no interchange with the city clerk right now, there's actually, we need to move on to the- Next line and, and I need, you need to be careful with the accusations you're making, including myself and the city clerk, okay?
Accusations are all true.
Yes, they, they are.
I'll address them later in the council, I'll address them later in the-
Council member English, if this makes you uncomfortable, I feel sorry for you.
I'll address them later.
Stop making these bad decisions, so let's not let this council meeting evolve into something it shouldn't be, okay? Alright. Mister Clerk, may we have your consent calendar, please?
Yes, Mister Mayor, I have six items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item ten, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eleven, treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item fourteen, resolution number eight-two-six-nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Proclaiming May second, twenty-twenty-one through May eighth, twenty-twenty-one as Municipal Clerks Week in Hawthorne. Item fifteen, resolution number eighty-two-seventy, CIA, CIA resolution of the city council of the Hawthorne, California. Proclaiming Thursday, May sixth, twenty-twenty-one as National Day of Prayer in the city of Hawthorne. Item sixteen, resolution number eight-two-seven-one, a resolution eight-two-seven-one. A resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, accepting federal aviation administration grant. In an amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars under the Federal Airport Coronavirus Response Grant. Program ACRGP and authorizing and ratifying the Director of Public Works execution of grant documents. Item seventeen, resolution number eight-two-seven-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Establishing restricted parking between the hours of seven AM to eight PM, Monday through Sunday. On the north side of slide of one-hundred-and-fifteenth street from Inglewood Avenue to seventy feet west of Inglewood for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second, okay, been moved and approved. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just let me say that, uh, I want to thank, um, Public Works, uh, Mister Allen. Uh, for putting the, uh, the item seventeen, resolution number eighty-two-seventy-two on, on this, uh, quick on the agenda after two weeks. That we talked about that, uh, the situation on the, um, on the car wash on Inglewood and, and Imperial. So thank you for expedite this, uh, resolution, appreciate it.
Councilmember Montero, and it's, uh, so actually I was, I did vote in the affirmative, Mister City Clerk. I hope you captured that, and I, I concur with, uh, Councilmember Montero. The company, the car wash and the residents are happy that we're proceeding with this, so both the business and the residents. They want to have a good relationship amongst each other, so, anybody else?
Yes, to the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Item fourteen, I just want to recognize the Municipal Clerks Week, um, and thank the clerks for all that they're doing in the city. Uh, it's not an easy job, it's, uh, one that is hard, but thank you for what you're doing and, uh, and acknowledging all our municipal clerks, thank you.
Okay, let's move on, public hearing, item number nineteen, please.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing on the draft of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two action plan. For the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs and Draft Twenty-Twenty, Twenty-Twenty-One Action Plan. Substantial Amendment for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program. Recommended motion, the staff advises that the council, one, conduct the public hearing and receive comment on the draft of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two action plan. And Twenty-Twenty, Twenty-Twenty-One Action Plan Substantial Amendment. Two, adopt the Twenty-Twenty-One, Twenty-Twenty-Two Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships. Program and approve submittal to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Three, adopt the Twenty-Twenty, Twenty-Twenty-One Action Plan Substantial Amendment for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program. And approve submittal to HUD. Housing Department's declaration of publication filed, no written communications were received.
Uh, so, is there anybody who would like to, else who would like to address this topic? If not, the hearing is closed, so order. So can you read the, uh, the motion, please?
Okay, um, motion to approve the draft of Twenty-Twenty-One, Twenty-Two Action Plan. For the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs and Draft Twenty-Twenty, Twenty-Twenty-One Action Plan. Substantial Amendment for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program. Housing Authorities Housing Choice Voucher Program, Twenty-Twenty-One, Twenty-Two Annual Plan.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, is this, is, uh, Kimberly Mack available with the Housing Department?
Yes, she's available.
I, I have a question, I have, hi, Kimberly, good, good evening. I have a question, at one time we used to have the Community Development Block Grant Money, CDBG. Is that still one entity and then there's another entity that is now Community Development Block Grant Monies slash Coronavirus? Is that a different entity?
You are correct, yeah, they're two different entities.
Okay, so we have one from this co- community development block grant monies and how much is that?
Uh, it depends on. What, it depends on what, um. You want the, the current amount that we're receiving, we actually have a presentation for you, are we able to provide the presentation for the program?
Um, if we, if, if, I, not to hold anybody up, but I just wanted to know how much that amount was and how much is the CDBG slash Coronavirus Program?
Okay, so let me pull that up for you one second, and David, if you have it, you can chime in quicker. David with, uh, Munoz from LDM is also online.
Good afternoon, um, Mayor Vargas and council members. Um, with respect to your question, Councilmember Reyes. Um, the city received one million, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-twenty-four. Um, under the CDBG program. Um, it also has one million, four-thousand-three-hundred-six dollars and twenty-five cents of carryover funds. Um, from, uh, previous years. And so that totals out to two million, two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars and twenty-five cents, which is one grant. Um, the second grant, which is the CDBGCV or Coronavirus. Um, the city was awarded a total of one million, seven-hundred-twelve thousand dollars and, or seven-hundred-twelve thousand, nine-hundred-seventy-four dollars.
Okay. And, and, and Kim- Kimberly, this is what we're gonna be, um, ultimately, uh, deciding on how it's gonna be used?
Correct, along with home funds as well.
Okay, alrighty, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, anybody else?
Uh, to the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to congratulate, you know, Kimberly and the consultant because the, the, the report is, uh, well-done. And, you know, it shows, you know, all the, all the money that we receive and how you intend to spend it. So, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see, uh, that we're gonna do a lot of stuff, you know, help the small business with the loans. Uh, even with the facade improvement program, so I, I love to, to see all of those. So, uh, and you know, for the homeless, for homeless programs, uh, public service, you know, some, some capital improvements. So all those programs is, is, is dear to my heart, so I want to say, uh, well-done, this document is, is well put together. And I liked, I, and I want, it's wonderful to see that we're gonna help a lot of individuals, uh, with this plan. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Alright, anybody else?
I move.
Okay, second. Wasn't it already moved and seconded?
No, no, it wasn't.
So moved by you, uh, Councilmember Montero and myself. Uh, seconded by myself.
Alright.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Alright, ordinance, ordinances, item number twenty-one.
Orange number two-two-two-zero, second reading, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Mending section nine-point-three-nine-point-one-five-zero, farmers market of chapter nine-point-three-nine. Community events permits of division four, offenses against the public peace of title nine, public peace morals and welfare. The Hawthorne Municipal Code related to the definition and application requirements for the farmers market for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, next item, please.
Okay, ordinance number two-two-two, second reading, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Admitting chapter two-point-one-seven Youth Commission, chapter two-point-two-zero Senior Citizens Commission. And chapter two-point-two-two Parks Recreation and Fine Arts Commission of Title Two. Administration Civil Service and Personnel of the Hawthorne Municipal Code to make consistent and update the provisions of each chapter. And to make other non-substantive changes in influence of their uniformity for adoption.
I make a motion. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Uh, so, general matters, item number twenty-four. Are we on track, Mister City Clerk?
Yep.
Okay. Comparative General Fund Revenue Analysis, who will be giving that? Mister Interim City Manager?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, our finance director, Felice Lopez, will give that presentation, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Evening, Mayor and Council, um, there's, um, this is just an update, uh, to a report that was, um. Requested by, uh, prior city manager Arnold Chadbear. Um, he wanted to show the council where the city falls amongst, um, neighboring cities. Uh, in terms of tax rates and, um, how those apply to the general fund. Um, and this is just an update, there's, um, no action to be taken, we just wanted to make sure that you are aware of, um. Where the city falls, um, and we're about, um. Ten in the compare, compare, comparison to all the other, to all the other cities in the area. Um, and this would, could be used, um. In order to, um. Make decisions on whether or not, um, future raises or increases in tax rates should be made. Um, or could be proposed by council or, um, by staff. But it's just a receive and file for your information.
Okay, thank you so much, any questions? Okay, let's proceed to item number twenty-five, thank you, Felice, thank you very much. Item number twenty-five, CDBG, the Coronavirus Emergency Business Assistance Program Guidelines. Um, is, is that Kimberly, uh, Mister Interim City Manager, is that, would that be Kimberly or would that be yourself?
No, that would be Kimberly Mack.
Uh, Ms. Mack?
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, staff and guests. Uh, tonight, we're just coming back before you, as we previously spoke about the Emergency Business Assistant Grant Program. This, uh, program, it has been written, we've created the applications and now we have guidelines in place to move forward with putting it in action. The program will help, um, micro enterprise businesses, micro enterprises as well as small businesses. Micro enterprises can receive up to ten thousand dollars in grant assistance and small businesses up to twenty-five thousand dollars in grant assistance. Um, the grants are to be used for items such as payroll, rent, um, personal protective equipment. And other, uh, cost-required items such as items to expand the businesses. These are items such as, um, POS systems or assisting with converting to online. Um, programs or even outdoor, um, entertainment or restaurant services and things of that nature. So the costs associated with that. The program in itself, uh, is a reimbursement program of actual costs. So the costs associated with that, the program in itself uh, is a reimbursement program of actual cost. And the application uh, is anticipated to open once we have secured staffing and trained staffing accordingly. It will remain open, I will not close until all funds are exhausted or reallocated. Um, again, it will be posted to our social media sites, it will be advertised in newspapers, it will be. Uh, flyers will go out, it will be um, on Facebook and, and our website and everywhere we can put it out there. To get the word out to our small businesses, knowing that the funding is limited. The assistance will come on a first come, first qualified basis. Um, and the timeframe for processing is approximately four to six weeks, depending on. Uh, how long it takes for the owners to provide the requested documentation and for verification to be returned. Um, that's just a general update about the program and that staff's recommendation is that you have reviewed and will approve. The application and the program guidelines so that we can move forward with establishing. The website and application, online application and all the necessities to start serving the small businesses of Hawthorne.
Move to approve.
I second.
Uh, roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes, but I had a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, Kimberly, is this gonna be uh, applications accepted until it's exhausted, the whole um, uh, account?
That is correct, until funds are exhausted or reallocated.
And what was the funds amount, funding amount again?
Yeah, funding amount is uh, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Not gonna get very many, are we, but, oh well, wish it was in the millions, okay, thank you.
Pleasure.
Okay, any, anyone else?
Yes.
I, I just have a que- I have a question, um, good evening, Kimberly, and thank you for that wonderful report, this is really very, very extensive, we really appreciate it. Um, what um. When are you going to begin giving it out, how, how soon will we actually begin being able to implement the program?
So ideally, we've already placed the uh, information with H R to post for the positions for, so as soon as we can get someone in place. It normally takes anywhere from uh, I'd say four to six weeks to get someone in-house through criminal background check and all the medicals. To get in place, training is very easy for this, so I don't foresee any extension with that, so no more than uh, a month and a half to get the program up and running.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine and Mayor Vargas still have to vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't finish the vote.
Let's just keep track of this, I thought we had already voted, we, I don't even think we voted, did we?
Well, we started, we started, but it didn't finish because it was questions.
Yeah, there was a question.
So we, we just need to go through with all of this, um, and just, we'll keep better track.
Yeah, so now I'll keep, I'll continue, so Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
Okay, and Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Yeah. The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Yeah, through the chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have, I have to say that, you know, the uh, the application and, and, you know, it's very clear. And, and it is, again, you know, it was done, you know, outstanding. Uh, because it explained everything, you know, the pros and cons and, and it, it said it's had to so, well done, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mister City Clerk, are we on item twenty six?
Correct.
Okay, Mister City Manager, interim city manager, your consent calendar, please?
Mister Mayor, I have five items for your approval.
I move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, so uh. Mister Attorney, Mister Interim City Attorney, your consent calendar, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council, there's one item for, uh, on consent calendar for your approval.
I move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Alright, so, uh, where are we at? Action discussion items, okay, so uh, I have the first one, the first one being. Of directing the city manager and H R Director, interim city manager and the H R Director to return, re- re- retain. A recruitment form, okay, to direct the interim city manager and the H R Director to retain a recruitment firm. For positions of, of permanent city manager and permanent city attorney.
Good year.
You haven't started my presentation, oh, yes, so, yeah, you can, you can follow right after. Yeah, so I just need, since I'm introducing this uh, topic. Um, the city council unanimously upvoted to appoint Vaughn Norris as the interim city manager. However, it is an interim position and the city needs to begin the process of hiring a permanent city manager. With at least five to ten years of experience. Um, the H R Director can contact the previous recruiting firm that they, that we use for other things to start the process. Or we can choose to, uh, give Mister, the interim city manager like a good period of experience. To see if he's the appropriate fit for the position. But of concern to me is that on April thirteenth, the twenty 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 one. Three members of our city council voted to replace our experienced and trusted city attorney. Uh, Rasmi Ahara, who was the dedicated employee thirty years to our city. The interim replacement apparently was contacted behind the scenes. And was interviewed by two city council members in private meetings, possibly one. Uh, Mister Ewing, who admitted soliciting the city for legal work for about five to six years. Until recently was contacted by Councilmember Montero, and this is what, this was revealed by Mister Ewing at the public meeting. Uh, Mister Ewing inappropriately acted as an advocate during Mister Miyahara's closed session. And should have recused himself when it became clear that he wanted to have himself appointed as Mister Miyahara's appointment. I don't wanna get into the legal, uh, the legal lease and uh, arguments. But this is a blatant conflict of interest violation and I'll defer to the F P P C, the Fair Practice Political Practices Commission. To make a ruling on Mister Ewing's conduct. It's interesting that Mister Montero, though, wanted this election of the cannabis consultant to be very transparent. But as we can see, the process for the city attorney was not as transparent as we would hope for. Um, however, when it came to the city's chief legal counsel, which is the city attorney's position. Um, he was willing to be solicited by engaging in secret negotiations with Mister Ewing. And now we're being asked to accept him as a suitable replacement in a established interim city manager pos- uh, city attorney position. Without the benefit of a transparent R F P process. I would have been happy if the three members of the city council had chosen one of the top caliber law firms. That was used by Mister Miyahara, who always selected the most well-respected attorneys working for the top firms in Los Angeles County. But it's very important to know that all of these firms have been repents, representing the city. Way before Mister Miyahara himself was appointed city attorney in the City of Hawthorne in about, around two thousand nine. Unfortunately, three members of the city council voted for the firm with the most aggressive marketing campaign. And I dare to say that the residents deserve transparency and they also deserve to have the most knowledgeable attorneys with a proven track record. Representing the city's attorney, the city's best interest. Mister Miyahara selected firms such as Richards Watson Gershon, Best, Bestin, Krieger. Burke, Williams and Sorensen because they all have specialized knowledge in complex real estate transactions. Development deals, tax law, civil rights litigation, intellectual property and housing issues. And many of these firms charge way less than Mister Ewing's three hundred and seventy plus dollars per hour rate. It should be noted that the litigation attorneys charge even less. The city has not been presented with enough evidence that Mister Ewing's firm or he himself has, have this capability. It's as though we were giving him the combination to the city's safe. And he was able to name the highest hourly rate to charge the city, and this is very unacceptable. Because of the secret nature of how Mister Ewing came to occupy the most important seat in the city. Replacing the most respected and ethical person in the city with an unknown. Who appeared to commit, he could, appeared to commit a conflict of interest violation on his very first day that he interacted with our city. Representing the city, I can't accept them as an interim and I can't accept them as a permanent city attorney. I do recommend that we find some resolution here and that we name one of the existing attorneys in the city attorney department. Who already has familiarity with the operations of the office, rather than pay Mister Ewing while he is learning. How this well-oiled machine is already running. The litigation department, the criminal prosecution department, the land use department and the municipal law departments. Are running full speed and effectively because of Mister Miyahara's legacy, so. I make the recommendation that we go out and begin the uh. The, right after we appoint an appropriate interim city attorney, that we start the process on how, uh, going out with the recruitment firm. To begin a transparent city attorney hiring process. Or we can also choose to give whoever the interim city attorney a period of uh, to establish themselves. But right now's a critical time and I really advise my council colleagues is that we're going through labor negotiations. And we're also going with a couple, we, we also have a couple of other things that we're dealing with, the, the budget. And we need to be very careful right now and we can't stir things up and we just gotta have some stability. The floor is open.
I already, through the chair, I already asked to speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, I think it's a great idea to let our interims do their job for a period, a reasonable period of time and allow them to uh. Pursue a permanent position with the city, uh, with a reasonable amount of time is, I don't know, I spoke with somebody with the uh. Uh, El Camino uh, School Board and um, when they got rid of their, or, or lost their um, superintendent. They run on the interim for a period of a year and uh, with the understanding that they, they're gonna do a uh, recruitment. And allow that person to uh, participate in that recruitment, so, I, you know, I think a year is, is fair. Um, so yeah, so I'll take you a suitable time, two, uh, I would like to kind of amend your, your suggestion. I don't think that um. It makes the most sense to hire recruitment firm to find a permanent city attorney, I think instead we should issue a R F P. For legal services, I think we should look in contracting out our uh, legal requirements like most. Uh, cities do in the county of Los Angeles, I know we have eighty eight cities in the county of L A and more than half, probably seventy five percent. Contract out, use a co- uh, contracting model, which is the norm. Um, and I, from my research, that'll save our city at least a million dollars a year. I know you, everybody here cares about what we spend, um, and what our expenses are. And it's, I think it's proven that the contract model is the most efficient model and will save our city, like I said, at least a million dollars a year. Based upon the numbers that, 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 you know, I've, I've gotten so far from what our city spends and what other cities spend. Um, but also I would just wanna point out that. I, I think some of the statements are, are kind of misleading or incorrect about uh, conflict of interest, uh, the entire city council hired. Um, uh, Miss Benson Ewing's firm, uh, I think it was unanimous in a whole separate meeting. And then a complete separate meeting when Russell was uh, was let go. Um, you know, his firm or he was uh, appointed as the interim. That would've been the same conflict of interest as if we had one of our assistant city attorneys sitting in that, in that meeting where Russell was let go and they were named. As the interim, it would've been the same thing, it would be an individual that's employed by the city, uh, sitting in on that meeting where Russell would be let go and then. Uh, given the interim position with the same type of conflict, so I think, I think that's um. Not fair, right, to, to, to propagate um, incorrect information. And I just kinda want to set the record straight in that respect, uh. Man, I, I'll address a lot of things later though, but that, 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 that's my recommendation, let, let's give the interim a year. And let's uh, let's do a R F P, which we can do in, in-house, we don't have to spend any money with a recruitment firm, we can. Our staff can do its own R F P for legal services, let's save the city a million dollars a year.
Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to second uh, Mayor Vargas's motion to uh, to uh. Uh, direct the um. City manager and H R Director to retain a recruitment firm for positions of permanent city manager and permanent city attorney?
To the chair.
Hey, uh, you can make comments, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, just to, just to let everybody know, this is a discussion, it's not a motion or a second, it's a discussion, but um. I'd like to um, also make the recommendation that uh, a recruitment firm be an R F P. Not an existing uh, recruitment firm that was used previously to seek out the city manager's position. Uh, it's my understanding that uh, sometimes that's not even uh, done um, ethically or transparent. Uh, they will send a announcement for recruitment, knowing all along who they're gonna appoint, so. Um, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's what they've been doing here in the city, uh, so it's not necessarily true. So recruitment firm through an R F P process, um, I also would like a legal confidential with regards to uh, everything that's been said. With regards to um, conflict of interest, uh, F P P C can't make that ruling, um, I'd like a legal confidential. Um, and I also wanna open the chair uh, to uh, interim city attorney, I would like you to speak on uh, what they're claiming. Uh, of, of uh, uh, conflict of interest, I'd like to hear your response, sir.
Right now, we're, we're, we're going around city council members, he's not an elected official.
I didn't say he's an elected official.
This is a conversation, this is a conversation amongst us.
But you should give him an opportunity to answer.
This is a conversation amongst us, that's outside of protocol, ma'am.
Oh. Outside of protocol?
Okay, so uh, anybody else wishing a comment on this?
Mayor, what, outside of protocol, what protocol?
Okay, I'm running the, I'm going around finding out if anybody else would like to speak, you're asking him to give us a legal confidential. You're asking the person that is of concern with regards to conflict of interest. Think about what you're asking for, everybody, listen to this, everyone. Councilmember Angie Reyes English is asking for.
Mayor Alex Vargas, I am asking.
Councilmember Reyes English, I have the floor, ma'am, I am the chair of the floor.
I didn't say from him.
Councilmember English.
I didn't say from him.
Councilmember English, I have the floor.
My words, I said a legal confidential.
Councilmember English, let me, I'm responding to what you're saying, this is my item.
But don't twist my words.
I'm not twisting words, you're asking for a legal confidential, I am explaining. You're asking for a legal confi- a legal confidential, who else? Who else are you gonna direct it?
Doesn't he have a department? He has a department.
You're asking for a legal confidential coming through the interim city attorney about our concerns about his conflict of interest. And any other ethical violations.
There's other.
I think there's a big disconnect, I think the residents see for themselves what kind of uh, think this is, alright, so anybody wishes to uh, speak on this?
Through the chair.
Uh, uh, Councilmember Montero, you, you have the floor if you want.
Well, I.
We're about to approach.
I'll let David go and then I'll go second.
You guys are so kind, I actually get to speak, uh, just one, just one last thing, I, I think if we uh, compare resumes between the. Current interim and the, the former city attorney, I think that would kinda speak for itself, I, I want you guys to re- remind you guys, you're speaking to somebody who has. Hmm, I don't know, twenty, thirty years of experience doing exactly this work. Uh, for, as you guys have named countless municipalities. I would imagine that, you know, that person should know something about what they do in that respect, so I just wanna say that, that's it, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Uh, no, Councilman Montero.
No, a real quick question, Councilmember Patterson, can you provide us uh, your study and analysis of how? This uh, this mechanism would save us a million dollars, okay, that's, I mean.
Yeah, one hundred percent, you know, one hundred percent, I can tell you right now.
No, I would like for you to give us a written, a written, uh, a written example.
How about you ask your staff to do that? Ask your staff to do that, ask them to do their job and do that, that's not my job, I'm a councilman, ask your staff to do that, but it's a fact.
Alright, but that's a bold statement, Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, um, first of all, let me say that, um. On your open statement about this, this discussion item, you make some accusation, okay? And, and I'm going to be respectful and I'm not going to comment on that. Uh, because, you know, what was discussed in the closed session supposed to be in a closed session. Uh, that's not supposed to be brought into the daylight, now. We can go back in the closed session and discuss things that could happen. Because what I think that the, some of you, what you're trying to do is to put the, the charity in front of the horse. Instead of the horse in front of the charity, so I believe that the, the, yes, the people of Hawthorne. Instead of the horse in front of the charity. So, I believe that the the, yes, the people of Hawthorne needs transparency. And I I'm one of the people that is more transparent in this, in this uh city council. And I've been transparent for twenty-five years in the city of Hawthorne, speaking my mind. About issues that pertain to the people of Hawthorne and our staff and our city staff. Not about us, not about myself, not about my pocketbook, not about my self-interest, but about the people of Hawthorne. So what, when, when, when you make accusation. And then, uh and I do agree with Miss English and let that listen what Mister Vincent Wing have to say. Uh because you made accusation. Uh so he have a right to defend or speak himself. Uh and what I'm saying, by, because I respect you, I'm not going to disagree or uh. Or 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 get on a discussion that's go- not gonna take us nowhere. But because we still have to go to the closed session, discuss issue that is pertaining to city attorney and. The city manager. So I believe you guys are just, are just uh not following uh actually the the protocol. And whoever give you the, the advice. Of putting all this stuff on this discussion item before we even finish. The business of high interest city manager and high interest. City attorney, it's not even a done deal yet.
Okay, fine, those are my concerns. Uh uh staff, legal staff can give a council member Angie Reyes English the written uh. Uh opinion, the legal confidential, she she is entitled to that, of course.
I would like to, I would like to comment on uh what Mister Patterson said about the saving the city money. Um I don't think Mister Patterson realizes um the extent of the work that's done by the city attorney's office. Um if he believes that this is a bad model for the city and doesn't save the city model. Uh doesn't save the city money, then he doesn't realize how much effort is put in by the city attorney's office. Over and above the hours in the day, that uh s- some of those attorneys work day and night, they don't. Um they don't uh. May I finish, please? They don't get overtime pay. The, the, they, the litigation staff puts in at least um a hundred and fifty hours a week. Um the um and a so, and there's, there's a land use staff. The litigation staff is in court all of the time and their hours are are endless. Um and I think that uh Mister Patterson doesn't realize. How much work is put in by that office and what um how much money they save the city by not uh charging hourly rates. I don't thi- I don't see that there's any way in which uh out, someone who's charging hourly rates. Could uh save the city money over and above what the city attorney's office does. That city attorney's office in court all of the time, doing pleadings and motions. And they do the, they do the, the beginning of the work before it's even sent to outside the council. So that the outside council, by the time they get the pe- by the, by the time they get the cases, the cases are already worked up. They've alre- the the beginnings of the cases have already done, the the work has uh been done. Uh pleadings have been done, discovery's been done, and they get, they get the cases already worked up. So I don't see how this could save the city money. Uh Mister Patterson says he knows how. And I, and if he's, if he, if he does, then I think he should provide the city with uh with a written statement, a written. A white paper or something saying that uh how this would be done.
Through the chair, let me ask you one. One question, well, two things, one, uh you know, I appreciate the hard work of all our staff, I think that that that's important work. Um I think that um some of your statements are overstated. Because some of our legal staff can run an entire other firms on the side while they work for our city, so they're not that busy. And and secondly, I have just one question for you is, how much money does the city spend on outside council?
Well, y- you're making the point that we need to cha- you're asking for us to change the entire model of the city attorney's office. So I think you should be the one to say how much money you believe the city would sa- would be saved.
So I asked the question, I asked to wa- how much money is, do we spend on outside council? So we need to have a benchmark, right, to be able to judge our current model versus another model. The problem is though, nobody in the city can answer that question. I have, hold on, I have uh. I have the CAFER, I have our annual budget, I have a report from Felice. I have a report from the city manager, at all asking that same question, no two numbers match, right? So I have a question that nobody's been able to answer, which is how much money do we spend on outside services? Our budget, let me tell you what our budget says, seventy-five thousand dollars, well, we know that's a lie, right? Our, our budget, our CAFER say we spend on our legal department, one point four million, we know that's a lie, right? Uh a report from uh our finance director, given to uh 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 Mister Montero who shared with us. Says a completely different number. A report I got from previous city manager says another completely different number. So the question is, how much do we even spend in the first place, right? We need to have a benchmark to even make that decision. One thing that we do know is that we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars in outside legal services. And other cities who use a contract model, who contract out to a firm, they don't. Their overall cost is less, so. A- a- and I would like to ask the staff to do a report on that, right? Let's look at some other cities, comparable sized cities, find out exactly what they spend on their legal, uh their legal department, their legal services. And then tell me what we spend on ours. Unfortunately, nobody can answer that question today. So because of that, I actually think we need a forensic audit for somebody to find out, because the truth does not exist yet.
Okay, council member colleagues, um I'd like to make this bold suggestion. Uh I would like to suggest and see what you guys think about going directly into closed session at this point. And just kind of just, because all this is related to that, if you.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I need, we are, let's go to closed session, because, because as I say. We don't wanna be discussing employees and I don't wanna be and embarrass nobody into public.
Well, I've, actually, I don't wanna, I don't wanna. Anybody else?
What, what are we going into closed session about?
We can come back to those discussion items if they want to.
If, if, if it's, if it applies. Uh anybody else?
Which items are we talking about?
Forty-two and forty-three are closed session items.
Which one?
The last three on agenda forty-one.
Forty, forty-one.
Okay, and our city attorney, interim city attorney is part of that closed session, correct?
I believe that we should uh.
Or the, just for the interim city manager contract.
For the city manager and the other one that has to do with the.
With the litigation, yes.
Litigation, right? He's gonna be in that one also?
Yeah, forty-one and forty-three.
Okay, I just need to, I just wanna understand, what are, which one are we doing?
A three minute.
Okay.
To the chair.
Well, just a moment, uh okay, go ahead.
Uh Mister Mayor, for item forty-two, uh I have outside counsel that's needed for any advisement. Um pertaining item forty-two if needed.
Right?
Yes, yes, we need it, we need it. When it comes to to that forty-three, one, we'll call, we'll call on them, because we have to do it one at a time.
We're gonna go forty-one in order, forty-one, forty-two and forty-three. Okay, so uh there's no opposition, there's not nobody against it, alright? Anyone who wishes to speak on this a closed session, if not, I'll declare oral communications closed. I will now re- uh I will now recess the city council to meet in, to conduct a closed session for uh conference pursuant to the agenda. Item forty-one, forty-two and forty-three. But I think we might have.
One at a time, Mister Mayor, not one at a time, forty-one first, then we go back again for forty-two.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, we got three minutes?
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm planks. Just because you're at home doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm planks. Just because you're at home doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands. Scrub it while you sing this song. Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash. Rub your hands and fingers in the places in between. Using soap and water makes your hands so clean. Wash your hands. Reach out, you're almost done. Five, four, three, two, one. Now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality.
Are we okay, guys? Okay. The City Council meeting is called to order. We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. And Mr. Interim City Attorney Ewing, can... Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair, the interim city attorney met with the council in closed session. No action was taken, and direction was given. That concludes my closed session report.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, all right. Item number 42. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this closed session?
We didn't receive anything.
Okay, if not, I'll declare oral communications closed on this item. I will now recess the City Council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We're in recess now.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements or hauler permits.
Some of this is new, and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing. But all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm's length.
Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands. Scrub it while you sing this song. Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands and fingers and the places in between. Using soap and water makes your hands so clean. Wash your hands. Reach up, you're almost done. Five, four, three, two, one. Now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.laccounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The Organics Law called...
Meeting is called to order. We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Mr. Steele, can you go ahead and tell us what happened?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. This is on item 42 on the posted agenda, the Public Employee Appointment Interim City Attorney. Council met in closed session. All five council members were present. The council voted to appoint Robert Kim as the interim city attorney for a 90-day period, during which the city manager and the HR department are directed to recruit for a permanent city attorney employee. The vote was council members Vargas, Montero, and Valentine in favor, Patterson and English opposed.
Okay, thank you. We still have item number 43. I think we can jump into that. Item number 43. Mr. City Clerk, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this closed session?
No, we did not receive any comments.
Okay, before I recess, will we have the interim city attorney, Kim, join us? Or who will join us in the closed session? Do we need to... Councilmember Montero, you're saying something?
Yeah.
Did we establish who's going to be in the back on this item?
We have the outside council. Somebody knows what they're talking about.
Okay, okay.
We have the outside council that represent us already on that issue.
Okay, so whatever the...
So what we need is the HR and the interest to be managed there also.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chavez, you're...
I'll be leaving the closed session now. Good evening.
Thank you, good evening, Mrs. Steele.
Thank you.
Eric Chavez, I'm going to adjourn. So, the city council meeting is recessed to conduct the closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We're in recess.
...and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people, two arm length.
Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.laccounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The Organics Law called...
Meeting is called to order. We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Mr. Steele, can you go ahead and tell us what happened?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. This is on item 42 on the posted agenda, the Public Employee Appointment, interim city attorney. Council met in closed session, all five council members were present. The council voted to appoint Robert Kim as the interim city attorney for a 90-day period during which the city manager and the HR department are directed to recruit for a permanent city attorney employee. The vote was council members Vargas, Montero, and Valentine in favor, Patterson, and English opposed.
Okay, thank you. We still have item number 43, I think we can jump into that. Item number 43. Mr. City Clerk, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this closed session?
No, we did not receive any comments.
Okay, before I recess, will we have the interim city attorney, Kim, join us? Or who's, who will join us in the closed session? Do we need to, just one... Councilmember Montero, you saying something?
Everyone.
Did we establish who's gonna be in the back on this item?
We have the outside...
Council, we need somebody to know what they're talking about.
Okay, okay.
We have the outside council that represent us already on that, on that, on that issue.
Okay, so whatever the...
So what we need is the HR and the interest to be managed there also.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chavez, you're...
I'll be leaving the closed session now, good evening.
Thank you, good evening, Mrs. Steele, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Eric Chavez, I'm going to adjourn. So, the city council meeting is recessed to conduct the closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We're recessed?
...and improve the health of our people and our planet. Cal Recycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed, and talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of section 12.04.031 is also available from the city clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.laccounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, "What should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?"
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, I'm playing. Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands. Scrub it while you sing this song. Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash. Rub your hands and fingers and the places in between. Using soap and water makes your hands so clean. Wash your hands. Reach out, you almost got five, four, three, two, one. Now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing. But all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
We're back in session. We do have some items. We do have elected officials' report recommendations, so it's a little late. So hopefully the council will kind of go through those as efficiently as possible.
Mr. Mayor, hold on one sec. You have probably, you have to state that no action was taken on item...
No, 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 we do have a, we should have...
On item 43.
We need to, we need that, we need that attorney here. He's not finished.
Oh, him or Christine can speak on that.
Christine, yeah, actually, Christine?
Okay, so now we go to Vaughn.
Robert, Robert Kim?
Oh, Robert Kim.
Real quick, a question to Robert Kim, just to make this official. Are you there, Robert? Okay, okay. Or go ahead, Vaughn, just go ahead and report out safely.
In accordance to item 43 for council meeting April 27th, there was no action taken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open up... Okay, let's open up, city clerk, Paul Jimenez, report.
Thank you, Mayor, I want to thank everyone for watching from home, it's been a long night. I have a few updates, on April twenty-fourth, we hosted another community cleanup from eleven AM to one PM. I want to thank all the amazing volunteers that came out, we had about twenty neighbors show up from all over the city. I want specifically to thank the Hawthorne High School Creek Club and Vozes Con Decisión, who brought us a lot of volunteers from their organizations. Also want to thank Dawn for Republic Services for donating the trash bins and cleaning materials. Overall, it was a great day with good people who care about our community. It was nice to have a COVID-free, COVID-safe event for our community and we hope to have another one in the next couple of months. I want to thank, I want to commend Chief Ishi on his team for being a genuine servant for our community. There were a few topics that kept coming up on social media that I contacted Chief about. By the next evening, his team hosted a meeting for the community to address their concerns. I received feedback from the community who shared their appreciation of our police department. Thank you to Chief Ishi and his team. To conclude, I got involved to serve as the city clerk because I wanted to serve my community. So even though during the majority of my tenure, we have been short on staff, I'm proud of the work that our team has accomplished. In my work and life, I believe in collegiality, that we should treat each other with dignity and respect, simply because we deserve that as human beings. Earlier in the year, I provided a presentation of the city clerk's office to my colleagues on the council. I presented to council members Montero, Mayor Vargas, and Mayor Proten Valentine individually, and to council members Patterson and English at the orientation day they attended for their newly acquired positions. During the presentation, I stated that if any of my colleagues had questions or issues with my actions or the actions of the city clerk's office, to please contact me with, so we can discuss them as colleagues. So tonight, I reiterate that message to all of you, simply a phone call away, or you can email. So our community elected us as to our current roles, and as a result, I feel strongly that during our meetings, we owe it to them to serve as professionals who will treat each other with dignity and respect. That's all my end, thank you and goodnight, everybody.
Thank you, council member Andy Reyes English? I didn't go to the, no, he, I don't think he's present.
He's gone.
Council member Reyes?
I'm sorry, through the chair, I, I wanted to make, make sure we understood that we never finished the city council's discussion action items.
Oh, I'm.
So, did you want to make any comment on that on yours? Because I want to make a comment on mine.
I'm a, I'm, I'm, I don't want to, I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
I just want to, I just want, I want to make a comment.
Council member, you could, you could do it under your, under your discussion item.
Okay, that's fine.
If you want to touch on that, I think we had, I personally feel that I addressed everything I needed to do behind post sessions, and I think it was the most appropriate setting for us to discuss that. However, you know, we did, okay, council member Reyes English, go ahead. Council member Reyes English? Are you muted? I mean, okay.
Vaughn, I just wanted to bring to your attention ongoing complaints that the council's receiving, I'm receiving via email and phone calls with regards to various departments in our city. One in particular says basically that, you know, pathetic customer service, building a safety department, same thing with planning department, licensing department, so it could go on and on and on. These are ongoing complaints that we first addressed back in January when we came in as a new council. I'd like ultimately to know how we're working to resolve some of the concerns from the community. Moreover, I'd like to understand, one in particular having to do with solar panels, the solar permit permitting in the department, and I also want to understand what that fee is. I know that there, and maybe Councilman Montero, you can understand that this was, you know, back in, you know, the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California with regards to solar panels, and there was policy and legislation passed like AB fourteen, fourteen, AB twenty-one, eighty-eight, and these call for the lowered, the permit cost, so that it can make it easier for folks that want to put solar panels, and then also the permit fee caps, and I believe that our departments are not doing that, and they're actually overcharging, so I want you to look into that for me, please. Moving forward, and these are ongoing concerns again, we need folks to answer the phones in their departments. We need folks to call back people, answer responses via email, however it is that communications are coming through. There needs to be a better way of processing requests, and somebody needs to work on, I would say, the, just in response, from the department head, responding to some of these concerns. I understand that City Hall is going to be opening again, May third, but are we going to be taking constituents at the counters, are we going to be doing, opening up to City Hall business as usual? Is it going to be by appointments? These are some of the concerns and questions that are ongoing, because there's a lot of pending projects that are being held up, there's money being wasted, there's checks that haven't been cashed, it goes on and on and on and on, so please, if we could do that. Also, I had requested the city manager, if you would look into our vending here in the city, vending that's taking place over on Prairie and Rosecrans. There's concerns of open propane gas tanks, that's a safety caution factor. There's also ongoing concerns with regards to whose, whose, whose jurisdiction is it? County, city, and then there was also a change to the scheduling for code enforcement. We had asked for weekends, because there's more complaints on weekends, and I don't know what's happening there, but I'd like a report back on code enforcement and their hours changed to include weekends. If you could do that for me, please. The the, the other things I wanted to discuss have to do with the city attorney, the interim city attorney, Mr. Hewing, thank you for your time, thank you for your service. I know a lot of the information that was being put out through calls and emails and et cetera, had false information, was, in my opinion, not fair to you to be able to respond to some of the claims that were being made, and that's unfortunate, because that should have had an opportunity for you to respond. But thank you for your time, thank you for your service, and look forward to seeing you possibly down the road. I also want to thank, have we put it already, Mr. Kim, Mr. Kim that's coming in as interim city attorney? And also just again, to respond to the city clerk's office, the the point still remains that, and I'm going to put it out there for everybody to understand, the city clerk has the jurisdiction of the city clerk's office, and that includes responses from individuals and, and individuals that come live on phones. You could, you could say whatever you want to say, however, it needs to be directed to the, to the council. And all this other stuff, it doesn't matter, we are, we are here, we're serving the community at large, and that's exactly what we want to do, and we're doing it at the best interest of the people. And there's other opinions that could say otherwise, however, I'm still going to hold those accountable, because it is obvious from outsiders telling me the same thing, they could see exactly what I'm seeing. So I want to continue to thank the constituents that call me, that have emailed me, that call me and with, with regards to concerns in the city. I'm glad that finally, once and for all, the car wash was addressed over on Imperial and Inglewood Avenue due to the complaints that we were receiving. We're going to keep an eye on the, the car wash that's on Prairie Avenue and one-twenty-six out of concerns from the community there too. And other than that, I'm going to wrap it up, Mayor, but thank you for watching and providing your responses and comments to our ongoing council meeting and moving the city forward, thank you.
Council member, council member Patterson?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I have a handful of things. One, I want to request that we give the previous city attorney a certificate, thank him for his years of service. He's served about thirty years with our city, seen a whole lot, and definitely appreciate, right, any kind of commitment like that. Very few people work from the same institution for, for that long, he's obviously did something right. My husband to do though, I understand he donated eight hundred dollars to the mayor's campaign, as well as our new interim, but who knows? I understand our employees are coming back on May third, and which means telecommuting is going to end. However, I would like to ask the city manager if on the long weeks, the weeks where we are open on Fridays, that we allow our employees to telecommute on one day that week? Maybe half the staff on Monday, half the staff on Friday, so they can, you know, only have to be at the office four days a week. I work at City of Carson, and we still telecommute, myself, it took me two days out of the week. But I, I would like to, you know, support them in that, and hopefully at some time in the future, maybe we can convert to four tens, like, like the City of Carson. You know, as a city employee, I, I enjoy that. I do want to welcome Mr. Kim as our new interim city attorney. You know, look forward to you, you doing good work in that position, I understand you've done great work in your, your current position or position as a prosecutor. Let's see, I would like to ask for forensic audit of the city attorney's office. Whoever our new city attorney is, I need them to start at the clean slate, we need to know exactly how much our, we've spent in, in that department and outside council. According to my research, I can't find an answer, nobody knows. Our budget gives false and misleading information. Our, our CAFR gives false and misleading information. The reports I've gotten from the finance director is not consistent with those previous two documents. And the report I got from the previous city attorney, I mean, excuse me, city manager, gave a completely different number. And so I like to know how much, so if we can, you know, go back at least five years find out exactly, you know, how much this office has cost the city, I would like that. I would like, one of our, our, our outside councils mentioned there's a lot of information that exists, helping cities to analyze the value of having attorney's office in-house versus contracting out. I'd like to find some of this research, if city manager, if you can find some of that research that already exists that speaks to that, so we can be educated about the value of one versus the other. Let's see. I do want to address some things that are public comment, I think some things that were said about myself, and the previous interim was quite unfair. I received a, a letter concerned about the previous gentleman, and it cited an article, and that article said nothing bad about the gentleman. I bring it up because I take issue with bad logic. I take issue with trying to convince me to do something with lies and incorrect information. I personally reached out to the board, chairman of the board of Long Beach Community College, and he gave a glowing recommendation of Mr. Hewing, and reached out to a number of other municipalities who did the same. And so I think that what was said is quite unfair. I find it very interesting that African-Americans in our city have a hard time in our city. You know, we've had very competent people come in as managers and not be given director titles for some reason. We've had the hardest time having African-Americans in our police department, and that bothers me. All right, it's been shared, shared with me by our constituents for years, some reason our city, our police department nor our city reflects the community that we serve, and something about that needs to change. Mr. City, city manager, gentleman spoke about our planning director, said that he does, he has not achieved the requirements as set forth by his, I guess, agreement or contract, I just want to know if that's true or not. I want to know, is it true that we have allowed Planet Fitness to operate with less parking than what our code says? Is that true or not? And to a couple of gentlemen who addressed me directly, no, I want to thank the community in general for coming on board and voicing your opinions, your positions, we cannot operate without your input. I appreciate all, all, all the residents that, you know, choose to get involved. Two gentlemen though, that, that said some nasty things to me, that was very unfair. One of them, Mr. Vergara, called me, we had a quite detailed conversation, and then misrepresented me when he called in today. Mr. Sanchez, you know, his opinion will be changes depending on what, you know, what he's trying to get done. So those two individuals, I'll definitely, you guys have my phone number, I would encourage you to give me a call anytime. Make an appointment to see me in person, right, I love talking to men in person and, and settling our differences. There was a statement about me supporting high density and marijuana, I'll be clear. I was the first person to make sure that we realize that residential is not required at the mall. Individuals that you support agree to residential at the mall, I'm the one first one to identify that we can do a project at the mall without residential, and I'm not against residential at the mall. Classify me as this person that's going to let high density sneak in, I think it's, it's not nice. And while I'm not against housing either though, I'm not against serving the community. And saying that I'm going to bring marijuana shops into the city, I'm going to be very clear, I support cannabis. I don't have a problem with that at all. Please let everybody know, and if you have anything to say, come see me.
All right, thank you, council member Alex Montero?
Mr. Mayor, actually, before I go, I, I want our interested city manager, Mr. Vaughn, to talk about the reopen of the City Hall, because we didn't have a chance for him to, to tell us that May third, we're going to open the City Hall, so I want him to explain, you know, how things are going to operate, please.
Okay, no problem, yeah, keep it brief, because we're not, this is not part of the agenda, okay, yeah.
It is part of the agenda, because the City Hall is going to be open, Mr. Mayor, it's very.
No, I'm talking, it's not part of the agenda right now, it's not, you can speak about it, I mean, everybody's all sensitive. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll make it quick, after, you know, a long battle with COVID and the decrease in numbers, and the great staff we have here, the task force that has many of our employees and different bargaining groups involved in that committee, we have set a date of next Monday, May third, to open the doors for staff. We still will be appointment only, we will, we will reassess the appointments June fifteenth, when the state of California is scheduled to open. So we're excited to have all staff back, to get those individuals to work with constituents and work with the residents to complete those tasks that have been mentioned here. And just really quick, you know, in this new seat, I'm working with staff to improve those disparities that have been mentioned. So with City Hall opening, I think those items can be addressed, and I will report on them at the next meeting, thank you.
Real quick, Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. interim city manager? How, what's the, how are you disseminating the information to the community?
Regarding what matter, the opening?
The reopening, yeah.
We'll use our social media, we'll post it on the website, and then what we can do, secondly, on our appointment schedules, we can let residents know that all city employees are back at work with appointments only. With a projected date of June fifteenth to open City Hall for residents.
Council member Montero, would you like to ask more questions about this? I'm sorry, this, this is under your discussion, sorry.
I'm good, I just wanted to make sure, you know, it's on the record, so people will understand.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, again, thank you for the community for coming in and expressing their opinion, but one thing I have to say, we appreciate your voice, and sometimes, you know, you, you elect us to make tough decisions, and that's what we're here for, to make tough decisions that benefit the City of Hawthorne, not, not ourselves. I want to thank, you know, again, you know, Pastor Cook for all his e of Southern Hawthorne, Robert William. I want to thank Chief Ishi for the update, Kimberly to give us the housing plan and the small business program coming up. And I want to welcome the, Mr. Kim, as the interim city attorney for at least ninety days.
We can't hear you, you accidentally muted yourself, you accidentally muted yourself. You accidentally muted yourself.
We just, last thing we heard was ninety days.
I don't know how you get, you were excited or something, you hit the wrong button.
Oh, I don't know why I did. So I was just saying, you know, uh, welcome Mr. Kim, uh, for interim city manager for at least ninety days because we're going to recruit for a new city attorney. Uh, that's gonna head our department, um, and I want that everybody to work together, uh, understanding their roles. Um, and, um, I wanna make sure that, uh, if Mr. Wing, the Vincent Wing, the, the, the. The interim city manager for, for couple of weeks, uh, if he wants to apply for the position, he welcome when we're putting the, the, the. The request for proposal there for, for, for service and, and we want an attorney that is not gonna be affiliated with any law firm. So that's, that's the, the basic thing out there, um. Again, you know, uh, I, I'm just gonna read this statement because, uh. We receive a lot of phone calls, we, you know, a lot of people advocating for this and advocating for that. And, and sometimes, you know, there is a lot of misinformation out there, uh, and don't believe just in one person or, or another person, okay? Uh, because I've been in this, in this city for about twenty-five years and I always fight for the people of Hawthorne, not even for my, for myself. I fight for the people, for the children, for the seniors, for the, for the unhousing people. So I know some of you have a lot of questions regarding the tough decision that the city council took during the closed session on Tuesday. Uh, night, April thirteen, I want to reassure you that those decisions were made for the benefit of our city, our staff. And you, the residents, we need to move Hawthorne in a positive direction where citizens and business are proud of our city and our staff. As your councilman, I promise you to be the common sense individual. That will take action and vote on issues that will benefit our staff and you, the constituent. I was elected as your champion of integrity and I believe me, I am, and I will continue to fulfill that promise. In order to put our cities in the right track, we need to work together and ensure that we are addressing the need of our citizens and our business community. How Hawthorne has reputation to be one of the toughest cities to do business with and or open a business. So this perception of our city must change. We are witness hundreds of millions of dollars of investing going out to other cities in South Bay. And you might wonder, why not Hawthorne? It is my goal that you will help us create an environment of goodwill and welcome future business development to our cities. Based on our zoning codes, municipal laws, licensing and downtown specific plan. We need to do it with transparency, dignity and respect. Again, I am reassuring you that Council Montero will be the same individual. That care about the city, staff and our constituent, my door and my cell is open to you. Together, we can make Hawthorne flourish again and thank you and God bless, the city of good neighbors and good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Montero, uh, Mayor Protem Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, so first of all, I want to, um, welcome Mr. Kim as interim city, city attorney. Um, and thank you for your past service and, um, you have my full cooperation to, uh, if, if there's anything I can do. To, uh, to support your efforts in the future. I wanna thank Mr. Mia Hera for his excellent service to the city for the past, I believe thirty years, thirty, thirty-five years, I'm not sure how many. But, um, I want to thank him for his service to the city and, um. I support the, uh, I support, uh, Councilmember Patterson's, um, uh. Uh, position to give him a, a certificate, but I'd like to go further and, um, and say I'd like to give him a pro- a proclamation. To thank him for his service. Um, I wanna congratulate SpaceX and Elon Musk for the, first for the phenomenal training, the crew of the Dragon capsule displayed. Um, there's, uh, where they displayed their skill in avoiding a collision last week with orbiting space junk. Turned out to be a false alarm, but the crew had practiced and had all the procedures in place to act as if the threat had been real. I also wanna congratulate SpaceX and Elon Musk for deciding to locate their rocket recovery. Operation on the west coast at the Port of Long Beach. They've agreed to a sublease of six and a half acres for two years at Pier T, which was once the site of a US Navy complex. So thank you, uh, welcome, welcome again to the South Bay, uh. SpaceX and Elon, we, we wanna keep you here, um, and, and obviously you've made a commitment to stay in the South Bay, so thank you for that. Um, early in April, there was an announcement that the USA Space Force will establish the headquarters. Of Space Systems Command at the LA Air Force Base. Space Systems Command will be tasked with overseeing all efforts to develop, acquire, launch and sustain military space systems. This was a big win for Southern California, this cemented Southern California's leading role as an aerospace hub. The alignment of Space Systems Command at LA Air Force Base ensures that the Air Force and Space Force. Will continue to partner with industry right here in Southern California to develop, build and field. The most advanced and capable space systems. Uh, and before I close, I just wanna say, uh, with, with respect to the city council's discussion action items. I am withdrawing my discussion action items for, of thirty-seven, thirty-eight and thirty-nine, I'm formally withdrawing them. And with that, I thank my, I thank, uh, my council colleagues, I thank the public for coming out and expressing your opinions. Um, and, um, good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, um, okay, so are there any go-bags from anybody? Okay, so I'm gonna go straight to the end. Okay, folks, so thanks everybody for coming to the, you know, for watching the meeting, for my council colleagues. Um, for, I mean, we discussed the issues, we get down to the root, um, not everybody, uh. Believes the same and the, most of the ninety-five percent, ninety, even probably ninety-eight percent of the time, we. We agree on things, so that's a great thing, there might be a couple of things that we disagree on and, uh, but, uh. I think we're kind of mostly aligned on the great, uh, on the progress we need to go forward, okay, so. Um, as part of that, um, I also agree with Councilmember Angie Reyes English. On the weekend and evening coverage, so not just the weekend, but having evening coverage. For the code, because some of the violators, I mean, this, 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 this is the business that we need to talk about, right? Some of the violators come out at night, some of the vendors out there that might be having like, uh. Uh, food setting up shop in the middle of the neighborhoods now, guys. You know, you have, I mean, I know everybody wants to make a buck, but you, we need to, there's. We have a process where they can apply and get qualified with the Public Health Department. And get permission to, um, have a food cart or as, as vendors, but they need to apply for that. Nobody's saying they can't do it, but they need to apply, but there's people out there that are doing this without following those steps. So, um, right, Councilmember English, I mean, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Oh, yeah.
We, it's been set up for that, so nobody's saying you can't do it, but just apply and go through the process, but even then, people are just setting up shop without that. Without following the rules, so, uh, we need to, and that, so they open up shop like in the evening. Um, like on the weekends for sure, so we need to expand our coverage, uh, Mr. City Manager, interim city manager. You gotta really look at how we can expand that. And, uh, make sure that like, and I've always, and I've always asked and Councilmember Reyes English knows because she's been with me since two thousand nine as a city council member.
Yeah.
I've always asked, what, what I've always asked, Councilmember, I've always asked for like a report from them to kind of see how, how busy they are, right? How busy they are and what, what they're going after and. The last thing we need is for any of our employees, we need the employees to, to put work in. You know, it's not, this is not a country club here, everybody needs to come and, uh, go to work. And we'll sup, we'll support you, we'll, we'll see how we can accommodate you, we'll see how we can help you guys out as employees, okay? We're poised to do that, but then at the same time, we wanna make sure that on your end, uh, employee, and this happens overwhelmingly. Um, that, uh, that we always stay busy and, and you know, take, we need to let you know what we expect of you, right? If we don't let you know what we expect of you, then how can you guys respond, so it's a two-way communication between our expectations and. And your expectations from your employer, which is the city, right? The, does that sound fair? Okay, so I support that and I also support, uh, the customer service, uh, thing that she mentioned that you mentioned also, uh, Councilwoman. Um, I've, are there, do I receive complaints, um, I've received so, some complaints, yes. It's been diminished, but the thing is, we still, uh, there's always room for improvement and we wanna make sure that. Our employees are ready to receive, um, people who need to come to City Hall or call. And, uh, that they're treated with the utmost respect, uh, best customer service. Whether it's because they need to apply and, uh, for a permit, they need to apply. For a specific permission to do something, or if you're coming to even pay for a, pay a fine or pay a, pay a ticket. You know, everybody needs to be treated like, you know, like, uh, as a resident or constituent or a business, uh, person that you are here with respect. Okay, because that's a reflection on us, uh, it's a reflection on the city council, okay? So we need to make sure that, uh, we focus on that. Um, one thing that, um, one thing that I think is, is being started right now. Is the evaluation process and I think, again, Councilwoman Reyes English touched on that. But, uh, we have an evaluation process for our employees, so that's something, that's. The back and forth communication between the city, the employer and the employee. Where are we, what are your, what are our expectations, uh, what feedback do you wanna give us as a city, your employer, so. Everybody can grow together, right? How are you gonna know what you need to improve or what you need to address if we don't tell you or if you're not evaluated or we, or to, or on the other side to highlight. All your successes, right, that's an opportunity where we can see that. So, very important and this is something different and I think it's gonna be good for everyone. Constructive feedback, I wanna see mostly constructive feedback in this process, not like a. Punitive type of situation here, so however we can make sure it's as construct, constructive as possible, Mr. Interim City Manager. Just make sure we highlight that aspect, okay? Okay, um, then what else? Well, um, okay, so I really appreciate everybody coming out, speaking, um, it's been a long night, um, and, uh. Thank you for active participation. This city, uh, council meeting is now adjourned.